I want to open a select board meeting. This is a joint meeting with the TCBC. Where we're having discussions with potential vendors, i.e. architects relative to the TCBC project. And I'm going to turn it over to the chairman of TCBC, which is Scott Bugg.
Thank you. Mr. Kraus, welcome. We'll do some short introductions. My name is Scott Buggie. I'm the chairman of the TCBC, so I'm the selectman.
John LaCourse, selectman.
Gary Brown, selectman.
Ben Jeans, member of the committee. Court Lindquist, committee member.
Julie Glover, town administrator.
Tricia Jenkins on the committee.
John Tappin on the committee.
And Chip's fine.
Oh, Chip, okay. So, we have three general questions that we're going to ask all the design firms, and then we have some questions that are specific to each firm.
Okay.
That will be the first part. The second part will be if you have any questions for us, and then depending on what time we have left, free for all, if you want. So, it's very quick.
Okay. Yeah, well, I thought somebody said fifteen minutes was really quick, but that's a little bit more.
Now, we have the town administrator's going to give us heads up when it's like five minutes to go.
Okay.
So, just sorry to wear. First question comes from me. What is the schedule for other projects that the principal, whoever's going to be assigned to us, in charge, and architects and other staff are working on? So, other things that you're working on.
We have other projects, obviously, in the office. This is a very focused project for me, which obviously, we just might work more our time if it takes more time or not. Right now, I'm doing some work for the National Housing Authority, but it's really into working drawings right now. There's no really preliminary work to that. It's just executing some work. We're doing some work for FW Whip through a contractor, just kind of a continual thing of renovating their showrooms. And I have some, actually, some residential thing that I'm doing too. Place in Boston, it's a 3,000 square foot brownstone, which is historical, pretty exciting project to get involved in. But I guess the point of that is that, you know, we've never not delivered on a project, and we just end up working more hours. You know, the architecture profession's not like McDonald's, where every year you can expect 10% more or 10% less. It just kind of has valleys and peaks. I haven't yet, in 30 years, figured out how to flatten that valley and peak out. You just accommodate what you have to accommodate and get done. So, any commitment that we make, or schedule that we make, we will follow through on. Hopefully, check some references. I think they probably would have said the same thing. I hope they would have said the same thing. And, you know, when it's your own business, you put into it what you have to put into it with the judge and keep people happy.
Thank you.
My question is, is what are the biggest challenges and attractions of this project?
Sam.
Well, I mean, I think you've done a lot of the challenges because you've kind of narrowed down the site a little bit. You know, that clearly, the previous plans where you were looking at multiple sites for potential location, and hadn't really, I don't think, gelled with the concept of kind of a center village concept that you have now. That's a challenge because there's a lot of variables there. I don't, you know, I don't think there's any insurmountable challenges here. The biggest problem, obviously, is when we're on edge with any municipal client, and that's coming up with a great solution that makes all the program people happy, with a price that makes the taxpayers happy, with a building that's not cheap, because cheap doesn't get you anywhere in the long run. So, I think that there are ways to control some of those costs. We're pretty experienced with the cost. You can't do 10-foot-tall doors even though they look nice. You may have to be a little bit practical about things. On the other hand, it is the center of town. I think you have to, you know, spend a little bit of money on the envelope of what you're going to be looking at. It's really the mark of the town. And clearly, from an energy standpoint, anything you can spend is worthwhile. And that's really, you know, that's forever. You know, the energy side of the building, building a good quality building with, you know, proper air barriers, and even though it's not required, rigid insulation overlay on your studs to give you that, to break, that thermal break, that's going to pay back forever and ever and ever. So, I think that it's kind of all those pieces together. We've had a lot of experience doing that. You know, we've done a lot of presentations. We've done a lot of schoolwork, a lot of municipal work. It's never a popular concept to spend taxpayers' money typically. I know many people that voluntarily just want to do that. I think what's important is that you build your case, disseminate that information, and share it with people so that they can understand how you came to this point. And most people will look at that from a rational standpoint, and either get behind it or not get behind it. There, as you know, are always some people who are never going to convince, no matter what we do, that it's a smart thing to do. And it doesn't mean that those people should be lost. You still try and maybe include them on a committee to try to find out what some of the alternate ideas are in town. We always try to have maybe negative people on our committees when we can, or our presentation committees. Because a lot of times, when they take the time to understand the process, they can see why it makes sense. And that open book, you know, they go back to their people, so-called their people, and to send out that information. And it doesn't mean that it's 100% success, but at least that open discussion, get the information, let's make a rational decision. I think that's what people want to see, is if there's a rational decision, that you try to salvage what you can. You know, you've got some existing buildings. Clearly, anytime you do any of that, those buildings have been paid for. It makes the most sense to try to salvage what you can without, again, shooting yourself in the foot for the long run. You've got to make a good decision for the overall builds, a building that's, you know, energy efficient, low maintenance. There is no such thing as a no-maintenance building, those low-maintenance buildings. And balance the energy side of it with a practical return on the investment. You know, you can over-insulate and have a net-zero building, but typically, right now, that becomes a little unaffordable from an municipal standpoint. So, making a building very tight. Our Wolfborough project, which is geothermal, actually has, we actually did bullet door tests on those schools, just like you would do on a residence. And 30% of your energy loss is through infiltration. And so, if you can nip all that in the beginning, it will pay off in the long run.
Thank you.
I think you answered my question.
Oh, no. I thought I was rambling there.
I do have a standby question.
Okay, great.
This question is kind of based on the next step as we go into the building of the project. What system have you seen and do you use relative to the interface between the two parties, you and us, to control engineering change requests and the costs associated with? How does that, how do you see that working with the?
You mean, once we go to a working drawing phase, and then starting construction?
And there's engineering change requests, obviously, they have a cost attached to them. How have you seen that process work in the past?
Well, I mean, I think the best way for it to work is hopefully not to get into that position, but I will tell you, our stuff is not perfect either. Our change order rate's around 3% to 4% or 5%. Majority of that is the contingency that the owner decides in the end if they want to add things that they kind of held aside until they saw where the budget went, where they got out of the ground. Your ground's a little safer, but it doesn't seem like there's any ledge around in that area. But still, it's a good idea to kind of preserve things until the end before you go for some of that second-tier issues. You know, we think we do a great job with our working drawings. And again, they're not perfect, nobody's are. But the Alton job was, what, $10,000 spread between the high and the next bidder on $4 million. And the Prospect Mountain High School was $16 million. I think the spread was $53,000, as I recall. So, having a good picture of what you really want people to do in the first place, and having it well-specified in your spec book, because they really are complimentary. It's not just the drawings. I don't know how familiar you are with all that package, but you know, specification's written, you have drawings that are drawn, and the two of them together give you those documented package.
Have you seen, did they have a point of contact for you to go to and say, hey, that would come to you and say, well, we want to do this, we want to change this? How did that interface?
Well, I'm on-site, so, I mean, I'm not on-site all the time. I come to the site once a week. I do my own job inspections. And fortunately, for some people, look at it unfortunately, the Internet and Gmail allow us all to become very well-informed. So, a clerk, we, typically on a larger job, we have a clerk that works, and he's on the job, or she, 40 hours a week. Any issues that come up, any discrepancies come up, you know, we're alerted right away. We don't, within our dis specs, allow substitutions, you know, during the course of a building that there's something that has to be substituted, they have to make a request to substitute that. And then we evaluate why they had to do that. Sometimes, you can't get the product in time, and that's a reasonable thing. We just want to make sure that the product that they would substitute is an equal product to what we would be using in the first place. So, we're pretty rigid, I think, on following the plans and specs. You know, that's what they bid on.
Right. I mean, that's the request for information?
Right. Request for information, yeah.
Where the contractor makes a formal request?
Right.
To make a change to the spec, and you, the owner and yourself?
Absolutely. It's a team decision. It's not my decision. I usually get it all funneled to me. On our weekly meetings, we discuss issues with a contractor, and something like that would be an issue that would come up. I don't know how familiar you are with the process. Contractors submit shop drawings of what we specified.
Right.
We check that against our spec to make sure that product meets the spec, and then that's what should go into the building. If it doesn't go into the building, it's got to be a pretty good explanation of why it doesn't go into the building. And we're pretty stringent on maintaining our specs and maintaining what goes into the building per our specs.
Right. And then if there are changes, that RFI process becomes an addendum to the, ultimately, to the spec.
Well, during bidding, the RFI becomes an addendum to the spec, and then all the bidders have that information, and then they can do the same thing. During construction, they can still make a request.
Correct.
That is something that gets evaluated.
Yeah, and it gets finalized at the asphalt.
Right. Absolutely. And then, our specification requires that they provide you with asphalts. So, everyone, plumber, mechanical, is supposed to mark on their drawings that maybe this thing took a turn here, or some piece changed like that. Major equipment is documented. I don't usually see major equipment change, and the only time that I've seen major equipment change is if there's a long lead time. And for some reason, that particular company doesn't have the stock, and it's going to hold up the job some time period, then you can look at and considering a different alternate material. It has to be an equal to the material. And we don't do in our specs or equal, we do or approved equal. So, even if there's a substitution, they have to come to me, look at it, and then you guys have to agree to that as a group, agree to that, that that's an okay change. And maybe there's a credit for that. You know, there never would be an extra, because they're looking to substitute something that they can't provide within the timeframe of what they promised you in the first place. So, sometimes, they can offer credit, and they'll say, for whatever reason, we'll give you credit for that. And if it's an equal product, I mean, take the credit, and then fine. But we are, and I am, and I think I've got quite a few years of experience doing it, pretty aware of the things that typically can get substituted. And, you know, I am really looking out from an owner's standpoint. I'm supposed to be fair to all parties, which the other party is the contractor, but obviously, I'm looking out for your, you know, your side so that you get what we put into our drawings and our specifications.
Right.
It's not usually a battle if you start off that.
Right.
You know what I mean? And also, I think it's important, and I will tell you, what we've usually done in the past is at least a select bid list of contractors, of similar contractors, so that you don't get somebody that's a two-person firm, somebody that's a 30-person firm. You really, you'll get, you might get a lower price than a two-person firm, but they might not necessarily provide you the service you would get with a larger one. So, we do suggest you do a select bid list, and then you're really looking at an apples-and-apples type of contractor. And it won't be the cheapest bid, but it'll be the lowest responsible bid.
Right. And if they know there is that RFI process, then they'll also understand that you're willing to work.
Oh, sure, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I mean, you know, the purpose of the drawings and the spec are to show what we want done, the quality of the work we want done, and how we think it should get done. If there's a way that can be done better, I'm certainly game for here, and if there's a way that can be done better, we just all have to agree that that's going to be better, and that it can be done better that way.
Okay, thank you. Those are our three general questions. Well, I'm trying to answer three level questions. Now, we have a specific question for you, for your particular firm.
Okay.
On page six of your proposal, you have, it's under number five.
Yep.
I don't know if you have it. Where you talk about, "We will make decisions that benefit the client and the program, not our portfolio. Design is important to us, but not at expense of the program, and should be the result of the program." What is included in the word "program" as you use it there? What do you mean by that?
Program is all the spaces. You know, I need four offices, I need room for 15 files, I need bathrooms, any kind of, that's really the program. You guys have a big chunk of your programs done. You've done a lot of work, as I saw on your website, over the years. So, I think you have a pretty good direction of what the program is. And, you know, sometimes, I mean, the program should drive the whole thing. Obviously, the solution needs to answer those program requirements. Then, on top of that, you would have, you know, the building form, and obviously, the cost of that building forms. Unfortunately, there's a lot of choices in the process now. I mean, there's too many choices, quite frankly, but there's a lot of options that you have to go through on everything. You know, finish, exterior, just almost every place you are, there are multiple products. Whereas, 30 years ago, I think the choices were much more limited than they are right now. And, you know, we clearly are interested in design, but the design is going to drive the project, and/or the program, shouldn't be the other way around, if that makes sense to people.
Any other questions on anything you'd like to follow up on?
No. I have one on.
Go ahead.
Number seven on page 18. Sounds like an interesting process. So, you say that you'll meet with all the parties to refine the two plan solutions into one plan.
Right.
So, we're going to have people who have different program needs, and might be very into Plan One, while other people might be very into Plan Two.
Right.
I think that's the problem. We're all, we're thinking it's going to happen. Boy, we're going to have to mediate something like that.
Well, I mean, you have a committee, and there has to be a head of the committee, because all this does is take in the info from people. And, because typically, that's what happens. You have a scheme and a scheme, and there's a piece of this, and a piece of this, and you kind of meld it into one. It's really usually how the process goes. And I think you've seen that. If I looked at a lot of the info on your website, you've gone through that process of kind of reworking and reworking. And clearly, the communication has to be open. Somebody has to make a decision at some point.
Yes.
Right? And so, usually, I think the occurrence you're talking about usually is sometimes limited issues. And at some point, you know, I will show you the plus and the minus, and the plus and the minus of the issue. At some point, somebody has to say, okay, this is the direction that we're going to go at. I can't, I mean, I can make that, but I don't really want to. It really should be the group making that decision. And you know your town better than I do. I mean, I can solve your program problems. I can solve the architectural, the design problems, and all that sort of thing. I don't know the people the way that you know the people. And so, usually, we come back to the committee, and even if within the committee there's not an agreement, it's usually the chair of the committee. And finally, not unlike the way our government works sometimes, the chair of the committee says, okay, this is what we're going to do. I think the important thing is to hear everything from everybody, and try to incorporate those things into that third merged solution. And I don't think it's too difficult. If people are realistic about what they need, I don't think that that's really that hard to do. Sometimes, people are a little territorial on their needs, but I think that you've done enough studies that there can't be anything too aberrant in the space needs now. It's going to show. I mean, all of a sudden, now, if somebody says, I need this room, this X, you've done two or three of these programs and studies already, that's going to be contrary to what has already previously been done. So, your program, I think, is really set forward. And I don't, I don't think emergence is bad, as you think it will be. I think it will go along pretty well.
Any other questions? As in any kind of interview, the tables get turned. So, do you have any questions for us? Any clarification, anything?
Well, I mean, you know, I have to commend you for the information that's on the website. It's, you know, there's a phenomenal amount of work that's going, maybe painful work that's gone into this in the past, but it's really build-on work. I mean, it's really nice to be able to go through that and then go forward with what you're going to do, because there's a lot of history that's been resolved to some degree. What exactly is going to be the schedule? Do we, have we established that exact timeline yet, or?
Well, I think many of the firms that are bidding on this, sometime in the early part of August?
Oh, sure.
In terms of, because between tonight, because after everyone gets their presentation done, we're going to have a discussion about who we like. Hopefully, we can choose somebody. And after that, we're going to set our town administrator, we're doing a contract with whatever firm that is.
Sure.
So, that's the schedule going forward. So, sometime in August, getting started. We've got some hard deadline deadlines in terms of a bond hearing, first Friday, January, and a deliberative session at the end of January, beginning of February.
And we have a bond hearing, don't we? Don't we have to do?
Oh, there's two, there's two public hearings to, you know, present what we've got so far, what do people like, what do they hate?
Right.
So, that's going to be a work in progress. And the second one, hopefully, we're further along, and we can show them even more information. One of the things you did talk about is this whole relationship process. It's kind of in part three, which you kind of alluded to at the beginning. But the important thing for us is in terms of that relationship, going back and forth, because, at least in my view, that's the important part of this, because that's a team working together to get this through, so.
All I'm, you know, typically, what we look at is we're really your vision. I'm kind of taking your stuff to try to come up with your vision, and the more info, and you've done a lot of it, but the more info you can impart on that, the more character that is going to be unique to the town of Lee, and responsive to what you guys want. And I can fill in what you don't give me, but the more you give me, the better it is. And I'm very, very open to, you know, I don't have a preconceived idea right now and/or ever of what it should be. I think if you look at some of our pictures in the back of the book, they're different, usually a different solution for different people. We try, and I mean, some of the schools are similar, because we tried to improve it for a school because it's a little long-term material, but from a design standpoint, it really becomes and tries to be tailored to the town. So, you know, mission statements of the town, or what you want from the, what you want out of a building for the town's, really, I think, an important building block for the process. And it really makes it much more unique for the people of the town, too. I can only give you what you give me, you know? And so, as much of that information, or thoughts, or ideas, really important in the beginning from a design standpoint, to have that input. I really relish committees, believe it or not, because a lot of them ideas come out of, and ideas that I might not think of, that somebody knows, and they can be very simple things, you know? They're very simple things, it can be incorporated, you know? If only I had X. That's the kind of stuff you really want. I know you need an office, and I know you need this. Some of the other things that make the work more efficient for everybody, and easier for the townspeople are really important adders to that. I'm not, you know, I want decisions made as a group. That's what I really would like to have. I can make them if I have to, but I'd rather my committee made that decision and understood why we're doing it. It's important to be able to project that to the other people you talk to. You know, it's all part of that selling process that I think you've gone through before. It can be difficult, for sure.
Anything else?
No. I'm good.
How are we doing on time?
We're doing great.
Oh, okay. You know, I went to one interview where they literally took a kitchen timer. The old ones that go tick, tick, tick. And you saw that right there, and it was like, I was like, all you could hear in my ear was this tick, tick, tick. We'd certainly like to work with you. You know, Will, you know, would like to make you one of our clients, and one of our satisfied clients. So, really appreciate the opportunity to come in here and talk to you. A little bit unusual, not having like a dog and potty show, but they usually would bring people, too, that give kind of a short time to bring consultants in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Should we make any changes? Is that flow okay for everybody?
Yeah, it's very good.
I'm very disappointed you didn't ask him what he does for fun.
No, I know. I'm holding off.
Oh, you're holding off, you didn't ask him.
He always has fun. What's your recreational? Again, it's not just him, there's a whole bunch of them.
Let me set it on four.
All right. Next firm is Harriman. All right. I'll see if they're downstairs. How far did we get? Like 24 minutes or something?
We got close to 24.
Okay. We did try.
We had more than, more than a minute left before 24.
Yes, absolutely.
We got three more.
Well, he answered a lot of questions by just talking.
Yeah, he did.
And covered a lot of them.
Yeah.
As I say, he pretty much answered my question.
Well, really, no, no, the last question. He did, he did the change order process.
Yes? No, I meant the question, my assigned question.
Yeah, the select board might want to say, the architects who put the works can approve change orders up to whatever dollar level.
Yep.
$1,000, $2,000.
Well, we got to have a.
And then beyond that, no, it's got to go to the select board.
Well, we got to have a procedure. I mean, you know, it's an engineering change request, or whatever you want to call it. Yes, at a certain level, they could miss $500 or less, they go ahead, but above X.
Yeah, he touched on it. You know, the contractor's going to have contingency in their bid, so, you know, they'll have to deal with that. That's why the RFI process really helps, because even when you're through that RFI.
That's it.
Yeah. Is that all right? We're here.
We're supposed to switch?
Do this. Don't move on both of us.
Hello.
Hi. Will and Julie, we do introductions in just a minute. We have three general questions for you, and then we have specific questions for your particular firm.
Okay.
We've got half an hour. We've got so many timings, so when we've got like five minutes left, we'll wrap things up.
Okay.
So, my name is Scott Buggie. I'm one of the selectmen.
John LaCourse, selectman.
Gary Brown, selectman.
Ben Jeans on the town committee.
Court Lindquist, committee member.
Julie Glover, town administrator. Tricia Jenkins, committee.
John Tappin on the committee.
So.
And?
You're also in the committee.
Oh, I'm on the committee, too. I got two hats on.
Two hats.
So, first off is three general questions, and then we'll get to the specific questions for your particular firm. And at the end, we'll ask, we'll turn around. You can ask us questions if you want to clarify anything.[1631.25]
Yes, at a certain level, they could miss $500 or less, they go ahead, but above X.
Yeah, he touched on it. You know, the contractor's going to have contingency in their bid, so, you know, they'll have to deal with that. That's why the architect process really helps, because even when you're through that.
That's it.
Hi. Will and Julie, we do introductions in just a minute. We have three general questions for you, and then we have specific questions for your particular firm.
Okay.
We've got half an hour. We've got so many timings, so when we've got like five minutes left, we'll wrap things up.
Okay.
So my name is Scott Buggby. I'm one of the selectmen.
John McCorr, selectman.
Terry Brown, selectman.
Ben Jeans on the town committee.
Court Blinkwess, committee member.
Julie Glover, town administrator.
Tricia Jenkins, committee.
John Tappin on the committee.
And.
You're also in the committee.
Oh, I'm on the committee, too. I got two hats.
Got two hats. Two hats.
So first off is three general questions, and then we'll get to the specific questions for your particular firm. And at the end, we'll ask, we'll turn around. You can ask us questions if you want to clarify anything. First question comes from me. What is the schedule of other projects that the principal in charge wears onto our project and the architects and other staff are working on at this particular time?
Okay, so I am the principal in charge, and you'll be seeing quite a lot of me as well as Will Batchell. He's an associate in the firm, he's the project manager, and you'll be seeing a lot of Will as well as other staff that we have on the project. So currently, between now and, say, November-ish, when is probably about when this is due, we're assuming. We are working on this project. We are wrapping up a project in Foxford, Massachusetts, which we actually brought some examples of that work on here today. That is being wrapped up in about three weeks. We have to have the final report ready for that. And Bedford, New Hampshire, we are actually at the phase where we have finished a report for the, for the town of Bedford. And we are now presenting to the, I suppose, the town council, the city council. And we had our first presentation for that last week. And we'll have another one on August 6th. And so we'll, it sounds like we're going to be doing city council presentations for the next few months. But, you know, that's, that's where that phase is right now. And then you are wrapping up.
And the work's been done, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm wrapping up a master plan for University of Maine at Prescott, actually, this week. Yeah, that's just putting the finishing touches on that. And we're doing a small study in New London, New Hampshire as well. For, actually, a lot of these are very similar, a lot of historic, small historic buildings and looking for repurposing and additions renovations.
But the additional staff, because this project, we're going to need some assistance from our site group, which we have a dedicated landscape architects, civil engineers. We have urban designers and planners as well. So we've assigned Tom Emery to this project for the landscape architecture. And I believe we've assigned Frank Crabtree as the civil engineer, I'd been saying him. But at any rate, our site group actually has probably more availability than some of our other folks. So rest assured, you'll definitely be getting a lot of attention there. And then we have our engineers, mechanical, electrical, plumbing. And their role on the project will be to come in, look at the facilities, do an assessment of the facilities. Then we end up with a report, which we can pass around, that looks very similar to this. The facilities assessment, and they kind of on pause while we continue programming and doing some conceptual planning. And then they come back in and help guide us with any sort of mechanical systems. If we're looking at energy upgrades, sustainable design, you know, if we're looking at, if you want to put PV arrays or anything like that on the building, they recommend mechanical systems and electrical and things like that. So, so they're at the beginning of the project, questions, and then they kind of come back in at the end for that little bit, at the end. So they are definitely wouldn't be, not, would not be full-time on the job, but they would be there home with the neighbors. And then we have another person that we have.
Always accessible.
They're always accessible. We also have a library consultant for the project, Richard Smith, who I can't speak to his exact schedule. He has been working with us in Foxford, and he's been working with us in Bedford. I'm sure he has other things going on. But again, he would be involved in the programming of the library and conceptual layout. And he wouldn't have been on our team, I feel, if he did not feel he could do that work. And then we have a cost estimator, a third-party cost estimator, PCM construction on the project. And they have, they know about the project. We haven't given, given them the exact timeframe yet, but they are very, very, very good. We schedule them in advance, we meet the deadlines, and then we end up with a full cost estimate from them as well when we're done. Kind of answered the question?
Sure.
Yeah.
I got a general question, it says, what are the biggest challenges and the attractions of this project?
It's, I mean, to be able to actually have an impact on a historic town center is a pretty amazing opportunity. And to see all the built-up buildings and some started there and some removed there. And to see also the opportunity of the church property to kind of add to the mix. To be able to, I know work has been done in the past, but to push the effort forward to allow the town center buildings to have a conversation with one another and really directly create a real space for everyone, I think is a huge opportunity. The Westland's very mindful of where that edge, where that edge is. And that might be a difficult, difficult piece to navigate and present some limitations, for sure.
Yeah, I would also imagine that, down one scene, the rights, rightsizing the project. We want to make sure that we do that in our programming phase. I think we're very good at that, but you want to make sure you don't overbuild, but at the same time, you want to make sure you don't underbuild. So we've spent a lot of time in the programming phase, and we do conceptual layouts of the buildings. And when you test them and they're challenged, I'm sure, you know, the, because the public is going to want to make sure they're getting the best value for their dollar. And so we want to make sure the buildings are right-sized for that. And then also, I think, the rest of that, I mentioned the cost estimating as well. But you folks, we want to make sure that we give you folks the information you need and that the town needs to make informed decisions. You might not like everything on here, you might not like the cost, but at least you'll know what it is. And then you'll be able to say, well, we need to phase it, or, you know, something like that. So I think it's the balance of, of, you know, what you folks will need to do on the committee, what the town is going to want to see, and you want to make sure that you have confidence in the information that you've got. And we have a good reputation, I think, for providing that level of service.
And if I could add to the, just the challenges, potential challenges. Nothing's insurmountable. We can navigate forward and through, but you're looking at the implementation plans. And you've done, you've put a lot of thought and effort into this process already, which is wonderful. But if, if the initial cost and ideas come in and they're, they're right-sized, everything seems to be going well, and in this hot construction market, the prices are coming in, you know, navigating the political appetite to be able to have a successful project and needing to sidestep and go off in maybe a slightly different direction. You know, but the goal is, at the end of the day, that we're able to deliver something that's going to be successful for you all. And it might take a little bit more work, but it's all going to get you there.
Thank you very much.
Once again, I think my question's been answered. I'm going to ask you.
This is off the law. We can use different words this time.
With a limited budget and challenges meeting all the stakeholders' desires, how do you see this relationship process working to achieve a successful outcome?
This relationship process, you mean with the committee and then with the town? Because I have to think about them as well. So it's, one of the things that I think is important when you're working within municipal projects is, you know, when we get to the end of the study and we get to the end of this, you want to make sure that the town is informed as we move forward. So we, in some municipalities, we have helped, and quite a few actually, sort of make sure that you have the information you need for sort of a public relations campaign. And we support that effort. And I think that that would be very beneficial so that when you get to the end of the study and you end up at the deliberative session and the town warrant, people aren't surprised. You essentially have a supportive, hopefully, a supportive group of people. At least they will feel that we've given everybody all the information they need. We want it to be very transparent. It is something that I think that would be beneficial for you. Does that, does that answer your question a little bit? Yeah. Transparency is key. And what you see, Will dispatched out some of Foxford that we didn't, and we brought Foxford because it's very, very similar to you folks. I think that this is a targeted, you know, facilities master plan. Foxford included a town hall, included a library, also included a council on aging. But those types of buildings as well. So, you know, it's, it's, it was targeted. It wasn't, you didn't need it, they didn't need any public safety building. Obviously, you folks don't either. So, you know, it was, we weren't looking at the entire town. That's what we're doing back in Bedford. But here, it's very targeted. So, you know, the conversation can be kind of contained to that one area, which is nice, actually. Don't have to think about, you know.
Thank you.
In the booklet that we're passing around shows some graphics of some little thumbnail plans that start with the baseline of the building that exists. Some of the options and ideas, some were different sites, some were the same site. But what we tried to do is to convey to people who were not in the construction industry, they weren't on the committee hearing all this stuff over and over again, to easily understand and be able to digest what the ideas were so at the deliberative session or town meeting, they could vote with, you know, some certainty. In this case, the townspeople voiced some, some importance for pieces that weren't initially in the project and were elevated to kind of an extended contract for us.
There's one part of Kerry's question that is on, you know, the budget.
Yeah.
With, with being.
Hey, when that happens. We always bring a theme song when this comes. Nice to provide that.
It's good, good. Just from the standpoint of this project, and, you know, we've got new construction, and then we have these historic buildings, restoration. So where, you know, where in that budgeting pricing is the challenge for you guys, knowing that you've got a town with, you know, a limited sort of.
Yeah.
A top-dollar line? And so where's, you know, where can you guys drive savings? And where do you guys see the, you know, the challenge on something that's like an historic building?
Yeah, very interesting. We've never heard that question before from any town. I mean, I mean, everybody is.
Are you complimenting her or are you saying that?
No, 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 you are not, you mean, that's what every town will. Every town has the challenge of balancing the budget and, you know, and the need, if you will. And so it is a balance. And the, it, it would be helpful, and, but most towns don't do it this good. But it would be helpful to know if you've got a budget upfront. So as we are, you know, this is, this is what we think will pass. And then we kind of guide that process and guide decisions based on where we think that budget is. That would be very helpful. A lot of towns do it the other way, which is, we really need to know what the need is. You tell us, we do the cost estimates, we got the budget, and then, then that's when the negotiating starts. And it is a process of negotiation when you say, well.
Absolutely.
Because you're, you're going to come up with a budget, and then the town is going to say, well, we don't want to support that. How do you, you know, possibly, that's what happens, because we're going to challenge. And that's the piece, I think, where you were also getting to.
But I was, where I was coming from, this sort of, you know, new construction, you're subject to steel tariffs and things like that.
That's what I'm going for, yeah.
Or concrete costs. Whereas for historic buildings, there's, there's the restoration of the building
and doing that in a quality manner. Right.
But I'm kind of wondering, where do you guys put the, you know, where does the value, where's the value driven for you guys, historically or new? And, you know, because new construction, people also want nice stuff there, too. More energy efficient and all those sort of things. I'm kind of wondering about the balance of that. You've got a project for both. Am I making any?
Yeah, you are. I mean, I'd say that it really goes back to our conversation with you all and understanding what your priorities are. Because there could be priorities that are, and again, it comes full circle back to political liability. And, and if, if the town is more interested in restoring historic buildings, well, then the effort should really be, you know, focused on that for the success of the entire process. You know, sometimes with these multiple-step processes in projects, to have a catalyst in the beginning that really gets everything moving forward is, is the best way to, you know, to kind of invest in the whole thing. And then the other, the other piece is just to understand where the town is coming from. Is there, is energy savings and sustainability going to be a theme that's going to resonate? Is historic renovation a theme that's going to resonate? Is, is value to the taxpayer for long-term municipal facilities going to resonate? And that's, that's an answer only you can provide as the expert. So we rely on you for that. And then we try to help you navigate the path forward.
Yeah, and I would say we, we're skilled in both. I do have a model that we brought, and I did want to, because your question kind of plays into this. Because I know a model is part of this. So this is actually the Moody's School, it's in your packet. It's, I think, the last project as an example. But it is a historic structure. And then we did an addition on the back, or, you know, of the building. And it's actually a sustainably designed project, and there's a PV array on the building. And it is actually performing at net positive right now. Not at zero, but it's actually paying back. So I think it kind of had your cake and needed to.
Well, the library is a good example.
Yeah, exactly.
Historic building, and then they went.
Yeah, and I think the sensitivity to that is important. And I just want to make sure you're in it. We place a lot of value on historic structures. We work with those in many of our communities. We're skilled at working on historic buildings to make sure that they perform to its fullest potential and to today's standards. Because if, you know, if the building was built in, you know, 1920 or whatever it was, you don't want it to perform like it did in 1920. You want it to perform today, and you want it to be energy efficient. And the other aspect to this is also, as you're looking at the, at the costs, it's not just the first cost and the construction costs, but we also have to be mindful of what's the return on investment. So you might pay a little bit extra in, you know, insulation in a building. But what's going to happen is that's going to perform better. So you find you might save $10,000 a year, and that insulation only costs, you know, $8,000. So, you know, we have to think about those things as we are evaluating these buildings because it's, you know, there is the first cost, but you also have to think about, as a town, how you're going to maintain these buildings, how they're going to be operational. And we can, we've worked with you, and you can establish, at least you would know what the operating cost would be. So if I may have just passed this around a few times?
Was that done with a 3D printer?
Yes, it was. And I think Julie called and said, is a model included? And I said, yes. So what we do, the, and we'll be able to touch it, but this has the site. This is just one building. We would do your, your full site, but, so you can get a sense. But this building, what we would do is basically do the building, and then we 3D print it. And it's very economical. And.
We use Revit as a software, or BIM, building information modeling. And so it allows us to take the existing buildings, get a really accurate.
Scan them in.
Benchmark.
Get them in, yeah.
Right. Everything from the space needs, because we have a benchmark of what's there. Then we use those square footage values to do our space needs. And as we develop our concepts, we're using the software. And if we're building it, we're building the massing, so that we can see, show you digital 3D images. And then when everything's reconciled and we have a plan that everybody thinks is going to be, you know, full steam ahead, that's when we hit the 3D printer button and actually start making this. And I have to say personally that I love building models. And we don't get a chance to do it that much anymore in our industry. So to have that as an option is just fantastic.
But you can, but you can see the type of detail that you print. And then we also, with this particular model, didn't make a distinction between the new building and the historic building because it's one building when you've done. So, you know.
We have a couple of questions specific for your firm.
Okay.
So let me tell you the two questions, and then we can play with our time in terms of you answering them.
Okay.
Your resume, it says, Julie has successfully led a team on many of Harriman's most significant projects which include variety of project types. What particular interests do you see in this particular project? That's question number one.
Uh huh.
And the second question is, how is your firm going to interact with us with, from Auburn, Maine? It's a long ways. So I notice, you know, there's some different options, but if you can address both of those questions, that'd be great.
Okay, the first one is, you can address the second one first, because that's even. So we have four offices. Portsmouth, which is, Will is from New Hampshire, and he's in the Portsmouth. Portsmouth, which is, Will is from New Hampshire, and he's in the Portsmouth.
I live and work.
Oh, we like him already.
Yeah. He lives in Portsmouth. I mean, and I'm in New Hampshire a lot. We also have a Boston office, which has our, a large part of our site group is in the Boston office. I'm actually out of Portland, Maine, so I'm not that far away. And I love coming over here. The engineers are mostly in Auburn. And so for them to come over and, likely, unless there's a special meeting or a special consideration of facilities or something like that, you, that, you might not see them at a public meeting, but you will see them in the building. So what, what will happen is they will come over, and usually it's in a team, so we're not hardly disruptive when we do our facilities analysis and they're looking at your electric and mechanical system and things like that. And so.
I'm sorry.
And they'll spend the day here. And it's, it's really, you know, Portland, Auburn, it's, I, I actually have a project that is finishing construction. I didn't mention this one because we actually just issued the certificate of substantial completion today in Fort Kent, Maine. It's five hours from home, so you guys are like in my backyard. So I'm really happy.
We had a conversation with Will, our clients from Foxford, and they're 35 minutes away from Portsmouth. And so, you know, during snowy days, they were, you know, sensitive to not, you know, have us traveling. And, and he caught me one day when I was driving up to Fort, I actually was press guy on me and for a master plan. And he said, oh, I don't feel bad now. I'm 35 minutes away compared to five and a half.
Yeah. But anyway, so that's question two. And so the other question about, for me personally, I just, I, I actually work on a lot of different project types. I love interacting with communities. I think that Will and I are very personable. I think working on municipal projects, you have to be, I mean, really any project, but I think municipal projects in particular, you have to have a personality that is patient, kind of fun, and, you know, that people enjoy working with. And I think we do that. And over in Foxford, I hate to keep bringing it up, but it's so similar to you folks, we've been working over there so much that we actually know the names of the, of the residents as they come in, which is starting to get a little, a little funny in some instances. But we really build up a rapport. And, you know, I think people feel that they can call us at any time, and we are very responsive, as responsive as we possibly can be unless we're on vacation. And even then, we answer the phone generally. So, and, you know, like I said, we, we love working on these types of projects. And, you know, there's a huge opportunity here for you folks, and we want to make sure it's done right for you. You know, you've got an opportunity with your town center to really, I think, make it something that you folks will be proud of for many, many, many years to come.
Agreed. So. Does anybody, was that five minutes left?
It's pretty amazing, yeah.
All right. So this is a, this is a section where, do you have any specific questions for us? About anything that we talked about? Anything in terms of, that was in the RFP that you have any questions on?
I don't.
You don't have to, if you don't.
No, I don't know.
I remember quite a bit.
We did. I would like to show you the quality of cost estimating that we get, if you are interested, because it's hard to see. This is actually hot off the press, and we're delivering it to Foxford tomorrow night. This is for their town hall and library project.
Three guesses, which project?
But it's, yeah. Well, it's best to concentrate on one, but this is for their town hall and library. So we have a project budget, and then we do a line item cost estimate. It's very detailed, so that I think the folks who wanted to see.
Can you leave that and these two with us? Or, or you can take those back?
Could we leave, could I leave one of those with you and we'll take one with us?
Yeah.
And I could also leave you as well, this is the facilities analysis that we did at Foxford for the different facilities that we looked at. So you can get a sense of what we are about as well.
Excellent.
If that is helpful.
John, did you have a question?
If I could just quick follow up, sorry. So, you know, that detailed cost estimate is often in contrast to a design team providing just historical data or cost per square foot. You know, we really throw in very, very precisely.
When you were talking about balancing to get the project right sized and doing multiple layouts which are then challenged, what do you mean by challenged and who's doing that?
So, if I may, real quickly. So what will happen is we'll sit down and we'll work with folks and I'll skip one project, a council on aging project that we have been working on over, over at Foxford. But at any rate, they have a sense, you know, we've worked through the plan, presented the plan, and then there's members of the public who come back and, or even the select board, will say, really? We don't think you need all this space. Prove it to us. Because we don't know the answers to that, so we want to make sure, you know, you folks will have the opportunity. And you might say, the, the community hall, for instance, that they had, they reduced it in size a little bit. It was a little bit of a compromise, because they got to the point where they said, the voters aren't going to support a project this big. So I think we took about, what, six or 700 square feet out of the building for that. But just, you know, I think, and that didn't just happen on that project, that, that building that happened elsewhere, but it's because we're working in, with people and we want to make sure that we program the building correctly, you know, so we got, we got a baseline program. But then you folks are going to take a look at it and say, well, gee, you only have two people here, why do you need three offices? You know, are we planning on hiring somebody? Some of the stuff that we might not know about. So it's things like that. But it gives you an opportunity as the committee and the select board to basically say, well, wait a minute, we're not planning to do this, let's don't build this space. And then also, those plans are going to be up in front of the community. And that's why we do those drawings like you see in, in there, because you can see the layout. This is, this is the need, this is why we need it. And, you know, and we compromise, so we will adjust the size based on what we start to hear and what the select board and the committee will start to think that is required. Does that make sense?
Oh, no, I just didn't know who was doing the challenging.
Yeah, it's you guys. Yeah, we got about a minute.
Oh, anything for, anything in the minute? No? All right. Excellent, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Very much. Somewhere we have our, our dollhouse. Aren't these fun?
They're great.
Foam core and exacto.
Oh, exactly. Yeah, those were the days.
And then the models used to be made out of?
Yes. Times are different. The base, the base is still.
Yeah, the base is still there.
The base is still there.
Depending on the.
No more foam core and exacto.
The contours, yeah, it's either.
They were in that alternate dimension with all the micers and buggies and lucky lips.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Send me the email. I said, oh, she doesn't have to.
That's good to know.
Yeah. So, anyway, but you don't need to pass that around to other folks.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you guys so much. Very nice meeting you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
That cost estimate gets down to two soap dispensers, $35 per hour. Eight hundred and forty sprinklers.
You're not going to pass this right over there.
Yeah, but I mean, if you're really trying to be cautious of the cost, you need that bad data.
Great.
But then, we should ask everybody else, maybe build your model.
Yeah, that was a nice one.
Because that's pretty nifty. And she said, she's like, yeah, like, that's my hundred bucks we can do this. So it's a hundred dollars to make that model.
Yeah.
So, and they need to be put out at separate costs, and that's why. So the person who's charging us $7,500, because one of we did, for a model, what do you know? They might be giving the.
They've hired Michelangelo.
They might be doing the foam core and exacto.
We're an Italian, we're an Italian.
That's a great idea.
Where's the rivers?
Yeah. The library had to.
A lot of people have 3D printers.
Yeah, that's it. They're not that expensive.
It's just now they've seen it, it's no brainer, but it doesn't feel the, I don't know who can ask, feel the fun, and that's how they do it.
I'll ask my friends.
That's what they do it. Again, I'm just curious, is the wire.
Those engineering companies have to. There's a Lakers base in Portsmouth. Co-op shop, I've got their, I've got their bunch of tools, and they have a 3D printer, and they say two columns of this.
Yes.
Julie's going to time us, so when there's five minutes left, she's going to let us know. So we've got a series of three general questions we're asking to the firms, and then we get specific questions for the firm itself. So let's do introductions. My name is Scott McQuaid, I'm a selectman.
John McQuaid, selectman.
Harry Brown, selectman.
Ben Jeans, I'm on the town committee. Court Luquist, committee.
Julie Glover, town administrator. Tricia Jenkins, committee.
John Taffet, committee.
The first general question comes from me. What is the schedule of other projects that you have principal in charge, architects and other staff are working on at this particular time?
We have several, well, good evening. I'm Art Quatino with AG Architects.
Oh, I'm sorry. We didn't do that part.
James Giddens from our office as well. And I'll, I'll jump into the questions. We did have just a, a very short thing we wanted to introduce, and I don't know if you want to do that now or answer a few questions first.
We're pretty tight. Can we, depends on how gracious we are, we can probably fit it at the end. Because at the end, we, last part is, do you have any questions for us at that point? You can use the time for that.
In terms of your, your question on schedule, projects, our schedule is good. We have a couple of projects, sort of both of them are kind of in hold right now temporarily. We're just finishing up some other work right now. We've got one that's slated to start in August at the city of Dover. So we're in good shape.
I got the second question. So what are the biggest challenges and attractions of this project?
Biggest challenges are involving the community and getting a community on board. That, to me, having been involved in the prior, prior study, and we worked with a couple of you, and I know there were a couple of members on the committee that were at those meetings as well. That remains, I think, the biggest challenge, is getting the community to buy into the project. And that isn't, at several levels. One is in terms of the cost of the project being a key thing. We know that in the towns, it's always hard to get people to vote to spend money, no question. So balancing what's it going to cost with what are you going to put together is, is a key element. I think developing the, the design solutions, I think, I don't think that's as big a challenge as identifying the goals. I know we had developed some preliminary ideas in terms of size and things like that, and I know the committee and the community has been tweaking that, and that's, that's, I understand, is still going on. So those things are minor challenges. Developing the design, that's something that we, you know, have been doing for a long time. That's not the main part of the challenge. It's getting the community's input, their involvement, getting them out to the meetings, getting them to see what's going on, getting them to ask the questions, getting them to help make some of the design decisions through that process. Those are where I think the biggest challenge is. And it's also, and, and we worked hard at the last, the last round to do that as well, where we had numerous meetings with the town center committee, with the facilities committee that was there before. We had several public forums, we did mailings. So we really tried to involve the town in different ways and the townspeople in ways. And I, I think that's important. I think it was through listening to the community, collaborating with the community, that we came up with a design that, a concept in terms of purchasing the land, expanding the town center, that people bought into. The town of Lee was one of the few towns in the state of New Hampshire to approve spending some money on continuing. I think that was because we did our job collectively in terms of convincing the town that this makes sense. And I think that's the challenge again.
My third question. Art, with a limited budget and, and challenges, meeting all the stakeholders' desires, how do you see this relationship, the process, working to achieve a successful outcome? I.e., you know, what's, what's the chemistry? How do we, how do we relate to one another to, to make this thing happen? What do you see?
Well, I think there are several moments. I think you've gone partway there as, as the new committee and from the prior committee in terms of recognizing, okay, where do you want to be in terms of the budget? And having a realistic budget. In this case, we've also brought on a construction manager to work with us, and we can do this throughout the design process. In our responses, you'll have seen the information on Martini Northern. They're a company that we've worked with on a number of projects, including the recent customer service center over at Dover City Hall. And we found them to be both knowledgeable about costs and reasonable about costs. Construction costs are not going down, but you have to find the right team to do that. So in terms of finding the right balance and the right approach, that's going to be a, a matter of identifying the programs, number one, as we've talked about and that you've been working on. Coming up with some design solutions, number two, that have an estimated budget. Testing those designs with the townspeople, testing those budgets with the townspeople, and tweaking. That may mean making some changes to the design, that may mean, that may mean making some changes to budgets as we go through. So it's a, it's a, it's a process, unfortunately. There's no magic bullet to say, okay, here's the answer. So I think it's that process that'll get us to something that the town understands and feels is the right solution. I know there was discussion, and I see it in, in the program that you've outlined, you want a comprehensive solution versus focus on just replacing the town hall with a new municipal building. There's also the library, what to do with the old town hall, what to do with the historical society, and to do that within a budget and phasing. That seems to be what I've read into the, the RFP, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, but that seems to be the direction that you're, you're indicating. And I think that's good because it doesn't leave the library out. It doesn't leave, even though there are separate, the historical society out. And trying to find that balance. Now, it doesn't mean that you can't decide along the way, that you might sequence some of those too. So there, it's going through that process, it's identifying the budgets, it's identifying the solutions, and getting the input from the townspeople in terms of what are they willing to support.
I'd like to ask you one more question. Sorry. Your prerogative. I, I noticed that for the, for the, that you're using 3D CAD CAM or CAD. Are you, are you using also, are you converting that into the CAM side for, of using printers, 3D printers?
Actually, in terms of the 3D printers, in terms of development model, I have talked with, well, one company in particular, in terms of preparing a physical model, which was mentioned. And that's actually how they prefer to do it, is the 3D printers, in terms of using that technique. So to have the. So to have the information in a format that then they can print it out.
Well, that's what the 3D CAD CAM is, isn't it? I mean, isn't that the, that's what it is?
Let me show you, and this will take a minute and a half.
Okay. The logo, yes.
Take me one question. Do you want me to instill a tire?
Okay, I didn't realize that. Give me one second here.
So I have a specific question for your firm. When you're ready for it, if you need some time.
Give me one second, Scott. Okay, sorry. Okay, while James is getting that set up.
Well, that's what project managers do now. Yes, last time they worked with us, he was an intern. Now he's been promoted, so.
Oh, that always goes.
Now I get to hold the computer.
You just don't break it. Put them out, just don't break it.
This is a specific question for your firm. Because you have prior experience with us, during your experience with municipalities such as us, working on projects like ours, knowing what worked well and what didn't, what would you do differently to make this process successful?
Yeah, it's interesting. When we started the project last time, there was a, I think, a fair amount of, I'm trying to think of the right word, friction. Let me put it that way. Between, and it seemed like the goals were not really clear. And I think we helped pull that group together to get past that point and to head towards a solution. And I think because of where you are, I think that was a successful process. So I think that worked well in terms of just the collaboration that we do. Now, in terms of what would I recommend that would be different? One thing that we've done in other communities, and I'd like to do it in the developing the design here, would be to come to perhaps the group, the town center vision committee, perhaps a forum with some multiple design options, to get more input at that stage when we're deciding which direction to go with the design from the community. We've used that several times successfully. For example, when we were doing the town of Durham, the town hall for them, we were working with a committee from the town staff. And we came up with a design. It was, you know, and they were okay with it. And we presented it to the committee and the community, and the community was not happy with the direction that it was going. So we stepped back and we did, I think it was 14 different sketches of possible solutions for what we could present, for what the town hall could be. And we went to a public forum. And out of those 14 possible solutions, we also had all sorts of variations. You know, it does have chiddies. Did it have, you know, was it one story or two stories or whatever? We had a tower, one less tower in one solution. And obviously, we didn't build that. But we used it as a sounding board with the community. And from that, there was a huge amount of consensus in terms of the direction the community wanted. And we used that to set the direction for what the design would be and ultimately what the town hall was. I think towns like Lee, when we worked with Durham, the challenge is that you've got a community of, with UNH nearby, you've got a community of very educated people who definitely have opinions. And it's getting through those opinions and getting people to agree on things. That is the challenge. And I think that's, you know, where I think doing that a little bit differently would help further along.
Is he ready? Does anybody have any other follow-up questions or anything they'd like to ask?
Real lost it.
Yeah, hi. You mentioned that you use AutoCAD Revit?
Yes.
Is that for all of your design?
Not all of them. We're still using AutoCAD for that. Revit is a 3D program that's different than AutoCAD. We can convert certain things between them. In AutoCAD, typically, we do just two-dimensional things, whereas in Revit, we're doing three dimensions. When we use the Revit, we can actually model a building on the outside. We can actually, and we're doing this on a project right now, where we model it on the outside and we can actually go inside and do three-dimensional views as well from the inside. And it really helps the clients to understand the design ideas much better. So it's a tool for visualization. So in terms of the Revit, we're using it on most of our projects. Some of the small ones that are not necessarily design-driven, they're more just functionally driven, we might be using the AutoCAD just in its two-dimensional mode. But even then, we're using, starting to use Revit more for that. I don't know, are you familiar with it, John, or?
Only what I've read on the website, I haven't used it.
Okay. Well, we have a presentation still working on. That shows a little bit of kind of how we would like to help the community visualize what we're doing.
Add a quick one. You know, when you worked on the, whatever, the previous committee and some of the visualization then versus what's transpired now with the church property purchase. So have you thought at all about that as far as any, you know, any visioning around the fact that we now have, you know, we're adding some land to this project? And, you know, obviously, we can spread out a little bit and just, I don't know, the town's footprint now will become a major part of the community in a cool way.
Couple of thoughts. One is congratulations on reaching the point that purchase, I guess, is going through.
Right.
That was, I think, our scheme 2D, which, glad to see it. I believe wholeheartedly that's the right approach. I'll tie this in with another question that was asked in the RFP, and that was the idea of smart growth. You've got a lot of natural woods over there. Some of it's probably, you know, second growth, not front forest. But in terms of smart growth, you try to do things within an area that's already developed versus just spreading and spreading and spreading. When we presented ideas to the committee previously, we were focused on not that, not as big a purchase as what I understand you're getting. And that changes, that changes the thoughts a little bit in terms of what might you do. In the last scheme that kind of set the direction, I think it was scheme 2D, we had the current town hall, the library, and then the future town hall and the parking in the middle. And that's okay. It puts the parking close to the other, to all the buildings, and that's a good solution. There's also a possible solution, especially with the additional purchase, that we do a town center in terms of town green that doesn't have the parking in the center between the buildings. And maybe the parking's behind the buildings to access the buildings, more towards the church side. Because you have that additional property, it might change what the solution is. I know you're talking about using the current town hall for a meeting space and also a display space. And does that mean we tie it in with the historic society? Or does the historic society take another location, perhaps, to the side of the green rather than right behind the town hall? Different ideas.
Yeah, I think that's, we're kind of aware of this. There's a, I mean, I think your job would be to keep us from running rampant with 20,000 ideas for it, because now we are a criminal space. And we want to preserve it, use some of it. Green ideas, you know, a town green sounds very cool, you know, that sort of a thing. So I think it'll be, you guys would have a challenge to kind of focus us.
Well, you know, one way that we do that is kind of what I was describing before. We come in with maybe several sketches. Say, here are several ideas. Let's bat them around, let's see what you like with these ideas. And you may have some ideas. Matter of fact, I'm trying to remember which committee member was, or one of the ideas came from him that evolved into this solution. So we'll, between your ideas and ideas we come in with, we can provide some sketches. We can talk about the pros and cons of each and begin to set a direction for it. It's a matter of looking at choices, what works, what works better, and making selections from there. Great.
Ready?
Yes. Can you all see it okay, or do you want us to bring it up there?
I can see it.
It looks good.
It's good.
You can bring popcorn up.
Anyway, it might be easier, because it's gonna be hard. Can you see it?
I can.
Okay. You can see the, you know, we modeled all of the existing buildings. And this is views of the existing. And we go into shots of the existing buildings. Historical society, the annex. The community, the municipal building, which we don't know what it is yet, but that would go in. And then the model continues around, you know, as a flyby. And the point of this is that it helps people visualize what's there. And so we would show the new site. We would show new buildings, new orientation, all of that.
We can add detail in however, how much we want. And this can be translated to your 3D printing to do a physical model. It's a lot easier for them to take the information that comes from this modeling program.
Proportionately, that's to scale?
Proportionally.
These are not?
Yeah, it'll be, the model is exactly how we model it. And transposing it to what they want, they'll be able to take the scale.
One of the things we included in our proposal is actually physically measuring and developing 3D model drawings of all the existing buildings. So we have very accurate. And the reason to do that is twofold. It improves the model a little bit, number one. Number two, it gives us accurate drawings from which to begin to develop solutions.
Great. Any questions for us? Clarifications of anything we talked about? Of the RFP or anything?
Question in terms of schedules. Are you, I know you're looking to go for next year's town meeting, which, looking at the way towns make those decisions backs up. So your schedule is to have some answers by?
Well, we're gonna be staying after the presentations and hopefully, we can decide on somebody tonight, checking the references and things like that. So sometime first part of August, after we've come to some kind of contractual agreement with which our firm that we pick. We've got some hard deadlines, bond hearing the first part of January, delivery session end of January, beginning of February. We've got two public hearings. So presentation, however far we've got, get reactions. I like this, I hate this, that kind of stuff. And then hopefully, as we get further along, another one in terms of, you know, showing the public what we've got so far. Those are our hard deadlines. So hopefully, we can fit it in. Most of the firms had a schedule in there, and they all seem to be about the same. But it's gonna be tight, so.
I suspect you're about into November timeframe.
Yeah. Any other questions you have for us?
No, I think there's sort of a positive in that we understand and know the town well from our past experience. And that's also a challenge in that we don't come in with preconceived notions. And that we're open to new ideas and different directions that you might want to serve.
Okay. I'm gonna ask you a question. You can tell me. I'm not gonna answer that question if you want. But one of the things that this committee, this committee, of course, you're familiar with the last committee. This committee is slightly different. But one of the things that was brought up the last time we engaged you was one of the things that you would ask us questions and we would give you answers to things. I don't know if you remember this. But there were some things that you continually asked that committee, and we never answered the question. How would that work this time? You know, these are different people, but, you know, you need to have certain answers going forward. And Craig's not answering your question. How would you handle that? This is a difficult question, I think, but.
There are certain things that we need to know and certain other things that don't matter. The ones that we need to know, we're pointing to need answers.
Okay.
And it's just a matter of pointing it out and saying, make up your mind.
Okay.
That's true. Put your foot down and say, I need to answer this now. I can't have before.
I'm working on a project right now with a client that's not getting those answers. I'm pestering her because I need those answers.
I think part of that, in terms of, I think I'm the only one that's transitioned from one to the other. But part of the thing was, and I think you mentioned it early on, is we needed somebody to jumpstart the process, and I think you did that for us. And part of it was, the group didn't necessarily know where to go and how to answer your questions. So that's why you never got a question and you didn't answer to some of those particular things. But I agree with you. One of the things that you did is, you know, moved us forward. And I think that was a painful process for some people, but I think you got the project moving forward. So thank you for that. But yes, I think you are also privileged, but also you're slightly crippled because you've worked with us before. You know what the thing is, some of the other people, all their people are coming in totally cold. They've seen all the details that we've done, but they haven't worked with us before, so.
So that was our five minutes to go.
And I think that process, coming out of it, the one key issue is involving the community. We can come up with all sorts of great designs, but if the community isn't involved in that process and doesn't agree with it, then we haven't done our job.
Anything else?
Good, weren't good.
Thank you very much for both coming in.
Thank you, Art.
Congratulations for your promotion. Maybe your next promotion will be you let your touch the mouse.
We hope you choose us. We'd like to work with you.
Thank you.
I said you weren't going to a closed session.
Yeah, their second work session.
So why don't they go now? Don't they go on a Saturday? Don't you usually send them out before the day?
Yeah, we have one.
For your information that software.
But, you know.
Herringham uses it.
I was down at the community church. I brought some clothes down.
Oh, God. Oh, God.
That's what they use. That's what they use.
So they had some.
I think so. It is one of the building information.
That was so nice that they have a process.
If you look at their website, it's not demoing with anything like our job.
AutoCAD is.
Their 50-story.
It's great day stuff.
The outside twists as it goes up.
Is CMK using a different solution, or are they still using slide rules?
It's an art to use a slide rule. You gotta be able to see those lines.
Why do you think CMK would use a slide rule?
Just because I think slide rule is just free on the floor. Mentioned they use BM. CMK just did that. We can.
They do three-year ready.
The BM goes, you know, on that, it can easily, essentially, everything's built up. Just the walls.
How it thinks that blue bill has slowed down. How it thinks that Blue Bell has slowed down.
Yeah, so it creates a...
CSA is going well.
Oh, that's good.
I'm on the list, so I hear, ready to pick.
You know, I work at the St. Thomas's, and I always wondered, you know, things are going to waste, how we could get them, not that I'm trying to do that this year.
This is us? We need a second to put something out, we want to get them in, so we brought some. Order yourself.
It's not just chaos, I mean, the people are... But it's not just hard to pass, it's...
Say what? Oh, thank you, yes.
As I'm looking in my bag...
I found one more.
So, I'm gonna start the cookies down here.
A little bribery, huh? Listen, you guys must be fully, you know, flat out, so...
Well, we've got thirty minutes, we've got somebody timing, so she'll let us know when we're like five minutes left. We've got three general questions, and we've got specific questions for your firm. We'll do introductions. Are you ready?
Sure, Kathy's still walking around.
My steps are...
Well, thanks for having us here, it's your show, so... Well, I think this is me of the last firm, my name's Bob Robicek, and I'm the studio leader for Civic Studio for LaValle Brancing Architects, and I'm sure you're wearing the company shirt today. I've been over thirty-eight years of civic municipal work, really focused on it my whole career. Have done a series of different projects, including here in New Hampshire. I'll be the project leader on SBI TPN, but I'm also gonna be heavily involved in the programming efforts and some of the design. So, I'll really be involved through the whole project, I'll be shepherding that project throughout whatever, how many months we're gonna go through on doing the project.
And I'm Kathy Porter, and I'm not an architect. And my role on the project is really the community engagement piece. I am an active volunteer in my community, which is very similar to Lee, actually. I go to Primex conferences, I go to the New Hampshire Municipal Association conferences. I'm really about municipalities, but I, my understanding, what I believe strongly is that we need our voters and our communities to know everything about our projects, because that's how they can vote for them, that's when we get the buy-in, and that's what we want. We want that yes vote, you know, I'm even, my town's moderator, so I'm at the polls all day on those Tuesdays, you know, engaging with voters. And I believe that's what works, is that people have to be well informed. So, I work with a team in that respect.
I think what's great about Kathy is that she brings a different perspective that sometimes grounds us in our work, because she brings a perspective of your perspective, you know? And architects can fall in love with their stuff they do, and if it's not within the budget, if it's not sold properly, it becomes another plan stand or, you know, doorstop. And we're very straightforward, honest, and we try not to kid ourselves about what we're putting out, because that's how you make doorstops instead of actual projects, so... But it's your dime, and by all means...
Well, I'm Scott Lumpy, I'm on the selectmen, and also a member of the committee, and we'll just give you a round and a good introduction, then we'll start.
I'm John LaCorse, I'm a selectman.
Gary Brown, I'm a selectman.
Ben Jeans, a member of the town committee.
Corcoran Quist Committee.
Julie Glover, Town Administrator.
Khrisha Jenkins, Committee.
Sean Tappett, I'm a member of the committee.
All right, we're gonna give you three general questions. We have just each of the design firms, and there's questions specifically for your firm. I have the first one. What is the schedule of other projects that the principal, yourself, and other architects and staff are working on at this particular time?
So, that's a good question, so we're a pretty good-sized firm, probably larger than some of the firms we've talked to. We have the capacity to do your project, I mean, I'm wrapping up a project in Woolboro. I'm actually presenting to the select board tomorrow night. Those of you who wanna come and see, you can do that. It's a public safety facility, a new facility, renovation addition, actually. I'm also working on a few other projects, but I, most of them are wrapping up significantly, except for one, probably sometime in September, that doesn't impact my ability or other people's ability to service this project. I mean, the study, we'll talk about the timeline later. If you have a question about timeframe, I'll be happy to talk about that. We mentioned it in our semittel. But there's nothing in our pipeline that would prevent us from, you know, being able to prosecute your project aggressively.
Okay, thank you.
I got the second question, is one of the biggest challenges and attractions for this project?
We just talked about that today. So, I'm gonna be, so one of the things about us is that we're gonna be very honest with you. And sometimes honesty can be uncomfortable, but it leads to great, you know, solutions. Anybody can come, you're paying us money, maybe if you hire us, and it's hard to talk about some tough things, but the hard, I think the biggest challenge you guys have, you've done a lot of great work, you did your programming, you did your site selection, you bought a lot, you know, you're kinda ready to go. And you also made a decision on an approach, Kath and I were looking at this, the recommended option, which is a medium plan, I love that. And you have identified a budget and all of that. I think the biggest thing for us, we talked about it, and I'd like Kathy to say a few words about it as well in a minute, is whatever we do, has gotta be sellable to your community, like I said a few minutes ago. So, the biggest challenge is taking all the stuff that you've done, okay, and making it a reality, and a reality that your citizens are gonna come out and support when it comes time to vote for the warrant article. The biggest challenge there becomes communication, staying within whatever budget you need to stay, which is about 3.4 million dollars, if that's still valid. And how to package it nicely so that people will get excited about the project. That's the biggest challenge, I think.
Yeah, and I think this is a charming community. And it was the walkthrough that we attended that was really informative, and gave us a real sense of what the project was about. And some of the challenges that you're having in your existing facilities, and some of the goals for a new municipal building. And it kinda goes to your workload question, is we don't, we don't go after every project. We try to find the projects that feel right for us, that we feel like that we could serve and represent that community. So, I have to say that there's, it's the sort of town-centeredness, and really the charm of your downtown area, it's very attractive.
I agree, I mean, we could have asked that question a hundred different times, because we've got talked about the front and changing road, and how you're gonna unify the buildings, you're gonna build a new town municipal facility. That's great, but if we can't sell to the voters, and the voters aren't gonna come out and vote for it in 2019, it's a plan stand. You know what I mean? Because there's a hundred other challenges besides that, right?
Thank you.
This look is because, this third question that I was tasked to ask, I really feel keeps getting answered with the second one.
Okay, we're gonna try to...
Try me a leak, have a cookie.
With a limited budget, and challenges meeting all the stakeholders' desires, how do you see this relationship, we're talking about between us, and process working to achieve a successful outcome? I.e., what's the chemistry of how we do business?
Well, that's actually a great question. It sort of touches on the second, it's so much, I like your question actually a lot. You have a lot of stakeholders, okay? So, everybody has their sacred cow, nobody wants to have their ox, a lot of cattle, nobody wants to have their ox, Gory, okay? We need to be, we're coming here without an emotional attachment to any of these buildings, okay? The, I don't live in Lee, actually, one of our senior architects, who's probably gonna work on a project, technically, is Dale Dohler, he lives in town, like right down the street. But we don't have attachment to these buildings, we understand. You did a very good job of identifying your RFP, how you saw these buildings, and how you made dispose of them, or reuse them. Kudos to you, a lot of people are gonna like, we love, this is great, we love these buildings, nobody could touch them, and the shed, you know, we're gonna, like, you were honest about it. I thought it was great, personally. A lot of times, we work with communities, and they go like, we can't touch anything. But we want you to do something. Okay, well, how do we do that? So, I think the reality is that, using our impartial approach and a sense of humor, which is very important, because there'll be times when we'll really need it together, we're gonna really work with you type, to really be honest, and this is the key thing. Honesty is a key thing. If your budget is, three months from now, doesn't appear to be viable, for whatever, I'm not saying it isn't, we'll tell you honestly if it isn't, okay? And we'll tell you why that is, or why it may have to be something different. If we decide that we don't wanna keep the annex, because we wanna use that frontage for something better than what used to be old fire station or police station right on Main Street, we'll tell you that. You already kinda said you might away with it. So, the answer to your question is honesty, communication, communication, communication. And really, honestly, every project we do, whether it's a town like yourselves, or a bigger entity, it's all about building consensus. And if sometimes you can't build a consensus, then the majority rule has to work. You can't please necessarily everybody, would you agree with that?
Yeah, I, one of the things that I liked about this format, because you realize that this thirty-minute sort of interview conversation is unusual. A lot of times, we go in, and they want a forty-five-minute PowerPoint, and then there's a Q and A afterwards, and they say, okay, well, you answered all of our questions, this was great. It doesn't really bring conversation out. And you're gonna have to live with the team that you select for a long time. And it's, you know, so this is kind of getting to know us. And I think that that is how, that's gonna be part of that recipe that's gonna make things work, is that you have to be comfortable with that team. And in knowing, you know, the honesty and the, but that, we know what we're talking about is really helpful. I mean, we're all qualified teams, I imagine, and so, it's really about who do you, and I say this all the time with the folks that I work with, it's who do you like, who do you trust, who do you wanna be around, you know, so... It is a good question.
It's a great question.
Thank you.
You asked it really well.
We have a couple of specific questions about your particular firm, but I would like to add one, because do every meeting, do you bring treats or not?
Typically, I'm trained like that, food makes everything better. Okay, good, score in that call. How'd they get past you?
First question, on page thirty-two of your proposal, it says, "We frontload sustainability considerations to help citizens realize reduced first cost and integrated high-performance solutions." Can you explain how this practice works?
Well, I think, I think that even since you wrote this, I have some other ideas, including something called passive house, but I think that, I think that as we do, you've already done programming to a certain extent. And I think as we look at the parameters of design for this project, which is conceptual schematic design at this point, we have to take into account, you know, what are your goals? And I think that a lot of times, I've been doing this for a long time, you know? And a lot of time, when this sustainability thing came on board about twenty years ago, it really came on board. People went out as kind of emissaries, and just would talk to you and go, you know, you do this project, but let me tell you, this should be a LEED gold project, or this should be... We need to listen to what you wanna do, it's clear in your RFP that I reread again last night, that you care a lot about that. And so, the thing, the thing with that has to be weighed against the budget. So, we have to have a very, or go the honesty thing, we have to have a very frank conversation about what sustainability level you wanna attain, how we put that early on into the project, because this is the early phase of the project, right? And identify what's really viable for you within your budget, because, you know, to really do, for example, do a passive house, it's not a house, but it's a process. Passive house building is gonna cost you five or ten percent more than it might cost you to do a regular building, just following the energy code right now, the state code, but you're gonna cut your energy bills probably by forty percent over thirty years. Right? So, it's that whole thing about first cost versus long, because I'm a developer, it's building a shopping center, you're gonna sell in three years, you're gonna own this forever, right? So, those value decisions about how sustainability, people throw that word out like popcorn. It's like collaboration, everybody loves that word, collaboration. What does that really mean? For you, sustainability might mean something very different, it might be for you, or the town of I live in Atkinson, or you... So, identifying the parameters of how we would achieve your goals, whether it's a net zero building, or a passive house, or, I'm not saying you should do this, but a LEED silver, but whatever it is, we have to understand, because it's gonna domino through this, through this schematic design. Does that make sense?
Question number two, it's from page eleven. It's about the Langdon Library in Newton.
Yes.
On the south side of the addition, there is a dorm and a bump out with a lean-to roof. As this is all constructed at the same time, what is the purpose of this? And why does it cost less than making the main section wider or longer?
You know, I can't really answer that, I would personally was not involved in that project. I will tell you that scale is a key issue in here, connecting the old and the new was a key factor of how you would do that architecturally, much as it might be on your library. Your library, you can't go back because of the wetlands and the bog. You can only go towards a church site, or potentially, if we decide to relocate or move whatever's to the other side of it, which is the temporary storage facility. So, how do you connect to that building? Their building was very iconic, you know, it was like a, it was a traditional, I guess I'm spacing here. The industrials, they gave all the money to... Yeah, Carnegie Library, I'm sorry, I was having a senior moment there. And Carnegie libraries, and how you connect to those are really tricky. So, in this case, it was more a design issue, how you connect to these two projects together without really affecting the original design. But, I mean, there's a million ways to skin a cat. Your building's quite a bit different, I think, than that, so...
I think, I did look at that in street view, and I think you are to be commended for, in street view, the historic building is what dominates, and yet, the addition tripled the total size.
Yeah.
But the question really was about that bump out on the south side, and I know you can't answer the specifics about why it was done. I was looking at it as, hmm, this looks like maybe it is trying to make it look like this was made in two stages, although it really wasn't.
That's possible. When I look at this thing, what I see is the initial Carnegie, and then this addition connected by a connector. And how it reads in the daytime, or this evening shot, or the lunch shot, really brings that out, you know? I think that a lot of times, when you design, so here's the other thing. Whatever building we design for the municipal building, or for the addition to the library, or whatever, it's your building, so we're gonna shepherd you through the design process, but there's drivers from the user groups that are gonna drive that design, you know what I mean? For example, the project in Woolboro that we just did, the client wanted a brick building, you know, because of the library next door, which we're also doing, just brick and siding, and across from this other thing. Driving around your town, you're more of a siding, you know, clavber community, so... Every project's different, it has very different drivers, and those decisions that get made in the design phase tend to be group decisions, you know what I mean? What I like about this thing, that it doesn't, it doesn't destroy the Carnegie library, because I've seen a lot of bad additions to Carnegie libraries, and they're everywhere, in the northeast and the Midwest.
Any other follow-up questions? What do you have?
I have something on sustainability.
Sure.
It sounds like you have a healthy, realistic idea of the word getting thrown around a lot.
It's like collaboration.
Yeah, I guess my question, and it's been around a long time, but is the market finally getting there from the standpoint of really being able to do sustainable design that is, you know, cost competitive with traditional?
Well, that's a great question. I mean, again, under sort of pure honesty, I think that there was a big push by larger entities, both public and private, mostly public, to do a lot of LEED certified buildings. When this first came out in the nineties and the early two thousands, that LEED, I just went to something the other day, and we were talking about the fact that the LEED certification process has... process has dropped significantly, less than half of what it was ten years ago. There's a lot of options out there, okay, without putting labels on them. We looked at Passive House, they're doing this very large project now, but it's individual small buildings, the model I sent you, the pictures of the Boden, that's all passive house, these smaller six thousand square foot dorm residential buildings, and the model I, the pictures I sent you were, were passive house buildings. So that's basically a very energy efficient, highly insulated, you probably know all about it.
Right, there's this, we're evolving now.
Right. And there's Green Globes, and there is, and there's, the Green Globes, which is another sort of free approach, there's Energy Star. I think the reality is that right now, when we design to the energy code, you're ba, you used to be on the LEED version, version three, you were basically were LEED silver, now LEED changed again to four, and I'm not so sure that you'll be LEED silver anymore. But you're getting a pretty good building. I think that, other than doing something that meets the energy code, which is mandated, you have to do it, both in New Hampshire, Maine, and Massachusetts as well, and never mind, if you're going beyond that, there's no cost for that. I mean, it just sets a sort of level of quality, that's to do with insulation, our values, and efficiency of systems that are specified, right? Once you go beyond that point, now you start to add some cost. So we just looked at something for Passive House that said it's five to ten percent. To do a LEED silver, probably five, ten percent, the LEED gold is probably ten percent. You know? So if you're designing to the current standards, there's no premium for that.
Right, but your comment about the fact that we're the, we're the design, build, owner, operator for infinity.
Pretty much, we are, yes.
So we've got other cost considerations to be able to correct leverage or use maybe in defending a.
Right, so if you're building a building, a municipal facility that you had budgeted at one point two million, let's say dollars, and let's say it costs seven percent more, but let's keep it around numbers, let's say it's a hundred thousand dollars more to do it, you might be able to save that in the first five years of operating the building. You know? And it's a reality.
We're not flipping it to a.
Yeah, you're not selling it to another Starbucks or something, right? You own for perpetuity. So I think doing this good, but my answer, really, the final answer would be, we should do the best building we can do energy-wise for the money you can afford to spend. That, that's, you wanna get the best car for the money you can afford to spend on that car.
Right.
And have no buyer's remorse. Right?
And no whiteout.
No whiteout.
No lemon.
No lemon.
Can you think of an example off the top of your head where maybe a community went into a project, not thinking that they were going to pursue a real aggressive energy efficiency policy, but you ended up going there, with the, with the math just proved out, so?
You know, it's an interesting question. What we find the most is that either clients tell us upfront kind of what their wishes are, you know, either in the RFP, or else when we start working with them, or we talk about it during a process. I think one of the things that has really scared a lot of municipalities and public entities, including colleges, and away from some sustainable, I'm not talking about beating the energy code, that's a given, okay, I'm talking about going beyond that, has been this whole LEED thing. I think people got really spooked by the LEED thing, because registration was expensive, it took forever to get approval, so we had finally got that one for two years on St. Mary's Bank, it took two years to get it. USGBC was very difficult to work with. So people got scared about that. So that's why people are moving these alternative approaches. I, I just think that an honest approach to sustainability levels is no different than coming to a very honest approach about your program that was in your presentation.
I'm not an architect, so I can't speak to much of the design principles, but the Wells High School, they did a very in-depth energy analysis, and they went with some real sustainability features, it's not passive house, and they did not go after any certification, but they're seeing real rewards on those decisions. It's just that, that whole energy analysis portion of it that proves it out.
Right. We haven't got the time yet, but the last part of our session is, do you have any questions for us? Anything that we talked about, anything in our opinion?
Kathy, I think, has a couple. I just wanted to save one minute at the end, because I don't want to make a closing statement, but Kathy, Kathy's jumping a bit.
Yeah, so I was curious about the, the goals behind having an actual model.
A physical model.
A physical, actual model, yeah.
Some people like to see what they're getting.
Okay, so.
So it's, so it's, I want to see it, I want to touch it, not necessarily touch it too too much, but, you know, when we did this building, we had a model, and that seemed to increase people's interest in the, in the project. Seeing something on the computer screen, or that's one, you know, level taken back. But if there's a model, they say, oh, I can see that, oh, and you're gonna do this. So it's engaging, part of the thing is getting the information out to people, and that's one way that we can do it, you know, leave the model out someplace so people can see it.
So I brought, we are a hundred percent Revit, that's how we do our, just our drawings, and I brought some examples of those renderings that take you into a space so that you could see it, just because I wasn't sure if that was a direction that you were avoiding or considering, so if you'd like to see them, I've got them, but I'm, I hear ya.
I can bounce them around if you want to.
I am not spatial at all, so I know, growing up and learning about building projects and seeing, you can, hold on, are thirty minutes up? I feel like.
Well, no, you're twenty-five minutes.
Oh.
These are just very quick run-throughs, they're different, I'll show you, I'm presenting these tomorrow night.
Two-minute warning, but it's five minutes.
Um, can you pass us that one?
Yeah, these are high schools, they're different kinds of things, you know.
So floor plans and elevations, I can't read those at all, like, they make no sense to me. So I had found that as far as we had come with renderings, has just made that job so much easier for those of us that are not obvious at that.
Yeah, three-dimensional imagery, but if you want a hard model, we did give.
Yeah, 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 I just was curious, because, I mean, like, the exterior look, that, that rendering of the exterior of the building, I mean, it absolutely puts it into the context of the neighborhood, of the buildings next door, so it's just, again.
But not saying those are great or not great, we're just sharing them with you so you can see someone. These are all very recent, like, in the last two weeks on work we've done. So that was.
And having people in them gives you that spatial sense that that's how many people will fit in there, because again, you show me round tables and chairs around, I just look down and I say, I don't.
Because some people are spatially challenged. They've got this eight-by-eight Roman, oh, I'd love that, but when you see it, ooh, that's, look at small.
That's neat.
So.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
And then the model, too, it's nice, I mean, like, we've done one for Boden, I mean, it's gonna be, they're gonna display it, but it is nice to have it, it's got its purpose and use, I just.
It's kind of cool, it's laser cut, laser cut is pretty cool, anyway, going to Clark's room.
That was really my question, is it laser cut, like, it's, it's the 3D printed, 3D printed?
Yeah, so what we did is we give our Revit file to, to this company, and they, they, it's pretty cool. Granted, there's a lot of repeated blocks, because it's a, you know, but it's very, it was very cool. You could do with some, I mentioned that it didn't have cars or trees on it, but it was coming, it's still working fine.
Well, the model we did for this building, or the, the architect did for this building, they put in a helicopter, and that got more flack in terms of, what do you need a helicopter? And he said, no, they just put that in there. So what we did is we opened up the model and took the helicopter out.
That's actually great, that's a great story, I have to remember that.
No new staff, no new equipment, no, get that out.
Do you have any other questions?
No, I.
Um, no, I mean, I, I just wanted to, I guess you have a question, it's the one you're gonna make a decision on, when you think you might move forward, that's one question before I make a closing statement.
We're staying after you leave, and we're gonna have a discussion, hopefully we can come to some kind of discussion, decision. You have to share references and things like that, but we're hoping to start.
We're troubled now, Kathy.
So we're hoping to start in the first part of August, we've got some hard deadlines, the bond hearing, and the first part of January, and the delivery session into January being in February. We've got two public forums, but hopefully we can get through all that, but those are our hard deadlines, so hopefully first part of August. But we should know soon, when we pick somebody, we'll have the town administrator work out a contract with the chosen firm, so.
Well, I want to thank you for the time, we're obviously the last ones, and you guys had a long evening, and, you know, I think that we, probably all the firms you talked to could probably do the study, I, I don't, I don't have a doubt about that. You work with one firm extensively, AG, I mean, I think it was right before us, and so I actually wondered why you not just continually with them, because, I mean, you already did work with them. But I think that we bring something different to the table, I, I think we have a greater depth of knowledge and expertise, we have a lot of horses, we bring a lot of abilities, such as these renderings, things like that. But renderings are not gonna be what sells it, I think it's eventually listening to you, working with you, building a partnership with you, to really put something out that, you know, that the people can support. And I think that's what you were saying, Kathy, and that's why I love Kathy's perspective on this stuff, because it's easy to fall in love with those things that are passing around on the table, but if people aren't gonna vote for it come January, February, then we're just wasting our time. And I think also we're gonna have a lot of fun doing it, who you see is what, you know, we are who we are, you know, and we're fun to work with, and we're gonna be very honest and supportive, but most of all, honest in our communication, because that's just gonna be what addresses your third, the third question. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for coming, I appreciate it. Can we get some people cooking?
Yes.
No.
Yes, 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 yes.
Could you imagine if I said, no, I'm gonna take those with me, you're all set, right?
Some of these are still in progress, and I don't believe it.
Yeah, that's fine.
This is not presenting, the select people are gonna see this tomorrow, the committee has already done it, the factory's already announced, so we're just out of the bar. Thank you very much.
You have a good evening.
Great questions.
Thank you.
You have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not going to, yes.
Oh, it's my.
Pleasure. It doesn't need encouragement.
He doesn't need encouragement.
So we're gonna deal with.
Okay, there you go. It would have audience for something like this, too, that's kind of nice.
Can we see it?
Coming out.
Thank you very much.
No, 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 it was just a site plan in case we needed to reference anything.
Just for reference, we love the format you had, that's the most likely to do, it's sort of a bunch of PowerPoints and people going out for hours about a bunch of answers. The people are gonna work.
Well, we should have asked you what you want to do for fun.
Oh, my God.
Have some food. Go home and walk my dog. Thank you very much. I gotta.
Yeah.
See this one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's where we all.
Yes.
Where's the wood bill?
Where's the beer price?
So what is this, placement? You know?
I think so.
Is this a placement?
It's kind of.
Interesting, yeah.
It's getting one of these.
Oh, okay.
Interesting.
I don't know if you guys saw that.
Thank you.
I think it's a placement, right? Well, they handed it to me, I'm surprised.
It's the only dump I'll ever use. It's pretty.
There we are.
What time is it? It's the Wolfboro, yours is. She's taking notes, she knows. She's over there. Well, that was clever.
Oh, you did. Yeah, I mean, there's one.
All right.
Very clever.
Floor is open.
I'm not saying, I'm not, I didn't mean it.
Can I, can I make the first remark?
Sure, absolutely.
I have to say, I was very impressed that they assigned a person strictly to, to sell the project to the public, and that they bring that person here, gives the understanding of, that is the number one challenge. And they assign a person whose sole responsibility is to help me sell the project.
Smart. Yeah, because I think that's, for us, that's gonna be the hardest thing.
Levalle was also the only group that mentioned our budget. They were the only group that said three point four million dollars. And I also wanted to point out that Harriman asked, one thing that would be helpful, helpful is knowing your budget.
Yes, I know.
Which was a little red flag, right, because that, that should be known. I, I think the last group demonstrated a lot of, they knew everything in the RFP.
Any other comments?
I actually think that when it comes to knowing the budget, I'm not sure that we do know how we're supporting. I think there's a, we have a question which we have not sent to the board about the budget, which is, when the design comes in and some numbers are either above that three point three or below that three point three, how do we adjust? Do we stick with the size of the buildings recommended by the previous committee, which might mean that it comes in at a lower price, or do we think that that, as was asked, do we think that that three point three million is what will pass? And so if we find out we can do X square feet for less, we then let the building get bigger? And that's a question that I think is not up to the committee, which is a question for the select board, and is not, not a question for you to answer tonight, but I think it's a question that we should ask you.
Yeah.
Yeah, let me work it.
Right.
I, let me tell my opinion of it. From not being involved with the, the committee, so I haven't heard any of the discussions, all I really heard is what was being presented here tonight, so I have no idea how big the firms are and how small they are. I did feel that this last one, and actually Harriman, even though it was a budget issue, you know, the two people came along, they both were interactive, they both presented well. I think the last group is very enthusiastic, and I do like the fact is, Julia was saying, is a point person just to sell the project, but also Harriman, the young lady, she also was very descriptive of how very interactive those two people are involved. And it bothered me with respect to Auburn, Maine, knowing that there's a parchment branch and some other branches and so forth. Harriman, it sounds like they don't, they third-party out, so they don't have a large group, so they only grab people when they eat them.
No, it's the exact opposite. And if we had had more time, I was gonna ask that question.
See, I lost that.
They're the only firm, they have in-house almost everything, in other words, they do not subcontract out the civil engineers, the mechanical engineers.
So it's all there.
It's all one firm.
They have very few subs on the project, right.
And I wondered if maybe that's why their cost was more competitive, because everything is in-house.
It's why we also select, shortlisted them, because they had, you know, we, we wanted Levalle because they were big.
Right.
So we wanted to see how smooth they would be. Harriman had the distance, but also they had more in-house.
Right.
And then the other two were small with subs, so, I mean, it was a good mix of.
And I don't know, is that a concern at all?
When you're sub or?
Well, no, 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 Kraus and AG are very small firms. And not that you want to go into this thinking that something's better have to do with principal, but I kind of was just wondering that.
Yeah, it's called getting, getting hit by a bus.
Well, what do you, what do you do? I mean, they're both, I really liked Kraus, I think he seemed very, he did understand what the issues were, and he seemed like he'd be an easy person to work with. But I don't know, I just, you just worry about there's no bench.
I kind of felt the same way, I, I, that was a concern, and my concern, work hard, I had not worked with him either. He seemed to be a little disheveled tonight. That computer chip went up and running right away, you know, just, he handled it well, he didn't yell at the kid, or beat him or anything, you know, or smack him around, but at the same time, a little bit more prepared. And I think Scott said it nicely in the end, though, you know, if he has an advantage and a disadvantage, I mean, we know his weaknesses and his strengths, because we've worked with him before, these other people we don't know. And I've been kind of leaning a little bit different away from Art, because I was looking for a new set of eyes in some ways. I mean, I think the previous committee, facilities committee did a lot of work, this committee has added to it, and it's nice to have a little extra eyes. We've basically got the building size down, but it might be a little variability, or it might switch this way or that way, or do some small things, but a lot of the work has been done. So I can appreciate it. And, uh, and I'm kind of leaning a little bit different away from Art because I was looking for a new set of eyes in some ways. I mean, I think the previous committee, facilities committee did a lot of work. This committee has added to it. It's nice to have a little extra eyes and we've basically got the building size down, but it might be a little variability. Or it might switch this way or that way or do some small things, but a lot of the work has been done. So, I can appreciate it. So, I'm kind of up with, um, La Valley and Bressinger and Harriman. It's kind of like, I, I could go with either one, I guess, at this point.
The, the, the guy with, was his name Will, the young gentleman with, with Judy. I can't, when I looked at him, he's, he's kind of the, the technical guy.
He certainly is.
He, uh, I just kind of got the feeling that that guy's going to have all the details up here.
He certainly does.
You could kind of tell.
Well, I, I felt comfortable with him because I could see him working his mind and.
So, they look like a pretty good team.
They look like you have good phraseology.
As well as the, um, and I, and I really like, um, the La Valley team too. They're all, clearly the, the lead architect, the, the lead, the principal is very charismatic.
Yes, he is.
Guy, uh, which, you know, from working, relationship building and working with towns and things like that, he's.
How big is that firm? Because I haven't read the material yet.
La Valley, they're big.
They're, they're.
They're, they're the biggest of the four that we.
Okay.
I mean, they're, I'm sure they have hundreds of employees.
Harriman, I have the numbers in front of me. Uh, they have forty-eight architects.
Wow.
Twenty-seven in the engineering staff and seventeen administrative staff.
That's a nice, that's a nice company.
That's a good size.
And yet, that's not reflected, you would think that that would be reflected in their cost proposal, but it's the exact opposite. They were one of the lower costs.
A, a concern I had, yes, they were one of the lower costs, um, is that, uh, they may have, because they've done this a lot and they have it down as this is how things flow through our company. And they did actually mention that. The MEP people, they come and they look at stuff and then they go away. That, if we are not, um, in step with that and if we don't keep up, um, that might be a problem. I just.
The, the one good thing though, them having the in-house staff is, they're in-house staff. I mean, they can tell them what to do, whereas your subs are kind of like, "Well, I can make Tuesday, but I got another meeting Thursday with another client," you know, so they're, you know, the more in-house capability, the, the more she, as the project lead or the principal can command some of those resources because they're in-house.
For, for me, um, Mr. Robot Scheck. She told me how to pronounce the name. For me, he, he said what I've been thinking all along, because any of these four firms can do what we need them to do.
Yeah.
That's, that's a given. The thing for me, which he articulated as well, is how, which firm are we going to have the best time working with? And I don't mean fun, I mean, in terms of successful relationship. I think for me, that's what this decision comes down to. You know, I didn't need a dog and pony show. One of the things that both of them said when I walked them out, it said, "This is different. I think it works best for you in terms of the conversation." Having a thirty-minute dog and pony show for them doesn't get to what we need to know in terms of the conversation. And I think, well, a big thing is, can we work with these people? Who can we work with the best? Um, because the technical stuff, they all can do it, so.
I was not impressed with, of La Valley's answer, um, to what was my question. Which was their jargon, um, in their statement of, "We front-load sustainability considerations to help clients realize reduced first costs and integrated high-performance solutions." And the reduced first costs, I didn't get an explanation of how the front-loading gave reduced first costs.
It was actually higher cost of trouble, right? And your, did your savings come back?
But, also, he probably didn't write that. I mean, that isn't one of the pages that goes in every one of their proposals.
Yeah, I tried to flush out more about sustain, because I think he, he had a long discussion about, you know, where LEED's gone and all of that. You know, you have the, the green building, uh, the green building council and all that sort of thing. And he's right about that. People are kind of like, "Who cares about my old LEED building anymore? Show me the money, show me the savings. Let's drive cost-effective sustainable solutions into our project." And so, what if I don't get LEED, you know, LEED certified?
What does LEED certification do for us? Is that like a participation trophy?
It's a plaque, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's the soccer.
But then that doesn't like qualify you for some federal grant down the road or?
Of course.
Okay. If there's no monetary benefit to it, I don't care.
It gives you some bragging rights in a way. Um, in some places, it's required. And it is also possible, doesn't apply to us, um, that there may be some financial advantages for private companies doing it or somebody else to help out.
I mean, it seems like reduced heating costs and reduced environmental impact are going to achieve the same thing. It's just a question of what kind of plaque do you want on the wall?
But I, I mean, we shouldn't, we shouldn't pull it though, because LEED, LEED is a, it's a total, it's a total program. I mean, it has everything to do with lighting, with, uh, passive, with carpeting you use, with, with how the, the natural light comes into the building. I mean, it's, it's a complete design, which does drive sustainable practices and, you know, green, long-term cost benefits.
The distinction, the distinction is whether or not you want to have that, um, qualified and checked off so that you can say it is certified LEED Silver. Or certified LEED.
Right. Apple cares about that.
You can still do the same things.
Right.
Which I think we should.
And don't go after certification.
You just don't go after the certification because.
App, Apple corporate headquarters wanted LEED Platinum. We don't. We're okay.
Apple, it's important for them to be able to brag about that.
We want to have savings on oil and gas and stuff.
So, we want to do this on the floor. Yeah, but I, I think he did give us good, I, yes, whether or not the jargon in the, in the, I don't, I don't know if the jargon in the proposals exactly addressed, but he, he did say, explaining kind of that it dominoes out into the plan.
Yes.
So, knowing where you want to be ahead of time. Because everything's going to be this give and take. So, if we say, "Well, we're really firmly committed to this," then other parts of the building are going to start being trimmed in cost to make, and make up for that. Whereas if we say, "Well, that's not so much a priority." Especially the certification, which seems, seems like it may just be a bragging right, we're not interested in so much as we want to see those actual energy costs, right?
I think the, the question is, which, which company out of the four do we feel most comfortable with doing business? And to me, to me, that last company, uh, has, has, uh, just, I think, an excellent approach to the way they came in here, presented everything, the discussion. Um, I, I think that the fact that they have organically the resources to answer the mail if there's a problem or whatever, you know, I really think they bring more to the table. Uh, and, uh, would be, would be the ones that could react quicker and, and have the resources to, to go through the entire program, even though there might be some, and will be some glitches in the way. I think they're more equipped to resolve the issues quickly. And I think that's important to us. All of them, all of them can talk about LEEDs. All of them can talk about greenness and environmental and lighting and everything else. They're all capable of talking that. The question's going to be, you know, cost versus savings, whatever the projections are for savings and how much, how much, uh, you believe what's, what's projected for savings versus knowing what the costs are. So, that's, that, we're going to face that regardless of, of, of who does the work. We're going to have to measure the, the cost of doing all those things, whatever that span we want to, we like to do versus what the projected savings are.
Let's, um, I don't know, everybody else wants to have a comment, but can we, uh, do a little ranking here? See if we're coming to the same conclusion or not.
You got the scissors.
Mr. Brown, do you want to do, uh, one, two, three, four? In terms of your first, your second?
Well, my first, my first is, my first election is, is the, the company that's just here, which is La Valley.
Your second?
And, uh, my second one, my second one, I guess, would be Harriman.
Okay.
Three? I'm giving the option to go half heart.
If everybody's first choice is the same.
I don't know, I guess I, I guess, I guess I would go with Art, with Dono, AG, and then Corzillas.
Yep. Four, CMK.
Kaczynski.
Mr. John, you want to be next?
Yeah, La Valley first, Harriman second.
Yep.
And then AG's third and CMK fourth.
All right. Uh, Mr. Jeans?
What?
Right.
Oh, you care, oh, you care what, um, yeah.
You care what I think, yes. Yes, I do care what you think.
The selection were the, you know, they were the three leads.
Well, the, the, the protocol for this is, the TCVC is going to give, give recommendations to the board. The board's already said what they, two of them.
So, so, so I'm going to, I'm going to go with, um, kind of what you said, Oron. Everybody's fully capable, they're all really competent firms, otherwise we wouldn't have selected them for shortlisting. But it is about relationships and who, who we were going to work with. I like La Valley number one, I like Harriman number two, and I actually liked Kraus number three and then AG number four.
Mr. Bloomquist?
La Valley, Harriman, AG, CMK.
Listen for the democratic process.
We need to go through full process.
Yes. Pat?
I would say La Valley, Harriman, CMK and AG.
Mr. John?
La Valley has risen my first and still first.
Yep.
And the rest are all tied.
Okay, so they're all twos.
Either last or second.
All right. Um, I'm going to be different. I like La Valley, but I like CMK better than the other ones. I think AG third and, and Harriman fourth. But it really doesn't make any difference.
In that defense, um, the, the, La Valley presents themselves and works with us the best. Are they going to be the best standing up in front of the town? Uh, is the town going to see them as, um, pushing something through, too much of something? What will the town, um, how will they react? And are they going to be more like identifying with CMK, for instance, rather than the, the finish come in with a special person to talk to the town? Where's, where's the town going to look at it?
Um, well, that was one of the things I noticed when I went through, um, La Valley's presentation and the projects they'd worked on. And I have some of them here. Uh, that library, um, ends with thoughtful planning coupled with forward-thinking collaboration between the trustees, local businesses, the design team led to in-kind donations of materials and systems to be implemented into the project. For the previous one, um, our, our design team orchestrated and managed all the donations and community efforts to keep the project on schedule. And that shows up over and over. There's places where they had, um, um, materials donated, um, and so, what stood out to me there is that as a company, and we don't know that on these projects, which individual is working on them. But as a company, um, they were not, um, saying, you know, "These are the materials we picked." So, you know, you can't take a donation from the community that is donating, I don't know, carpeting or whatever. Because, "No, we picked something else." It really did seem like over and over, um, they were working with the community.
I got the, what I, what I liked about her being on the project, not that she was going to be the face of the town's public relations per se, but that she would be interjecting during the project, the proper time for us to be thinking about PR.
I like.
Which I like, I, you know, I like that because I could see us sitting there going, "Oh, crap. I guess we better work on the PR now, it'll be like January." So, you know, I think that where she's going to be coming in and she's going to be going, "Okay, guys, I want my meeting tonight. We're, we got the PR discussion right up front on the agenda, so."
I, I think she is going to be somewhat a face to the public also. She's, she's very personable.
Oh, yeah, not, not that we wouldn't want to.
She's a moderator, she's, she's used to it in front of people. And, uh, I think that she, she's definitely value-added relative to doing presentations, uh, when you have the public meetings, et cetera, that she's going to be there and can say, "Wow, this and this and so on." Uh, I think it's a definite plus.
See, uh, my point on that, as well as the fact that she goes, "I'm not engineer." So, she separates herself immediately from the square heads.
Yeah. Hey, I resemble that.
Well, I'm, I'm in the same moment calling myself a square head, but in a sense, we're living in the square box, right? It's slide rules, right? No, not anymore, but anyways, uh, in the, she stands alone like that. She pushes herself out. While I have the floor, I want to, the chairman, I want to ask the town administrator, "Where are you going with this?"
Um, well, I actually, uh, worked with La Valley years ago when I was in the construction business and I worked with AG. La Valley is a very, they're a really professional firm. They are very easy to work with, they know their stuff. As he said, they're not afraid to have that hard conversation with the client. And I've been in meetings where those discussions can be very uncomfortable, but they were, they, they were, they were amazing.
Actually, that's why I put them over Harriman, because Harriman had been my pick just earlier.
One more, um, being, as I, you know, going through all this, uh, we, I'm starting a committee now. Right over the sheet, the committee basically had AG Architects number one. This was a one, two, three, four, six down, but you decided to go with Biding number six as number four, the planing. What happened?
The radius scales are radius scales. And part of the conversation is, how can you get along with those particular people? And I think we picked, it's more of elimination. We limited the bottom four. We eliminated Scott Simmons and SMP. They were the most expensive. They were like hundred thousand something. And so, it's more of eliminating the ones that we could and then that was, four were the ones that were remaining.
And the spread was not very much.
Yeah, the spread was not very much. They all brought something to the table that we liked, so. Um, the other thing to Pat's point, the TCVC has had a conversation about where we do presentations to the public. Not that they might not need this, but, uh, having the committee do the presentations and having them be the technical presenters, not necessarily the whole thing coming from those particular people. So, if you've got a good presenter, we'll utilize that. If they're not so good interfacing with the public, we'll minimize their, their presentation time to the public. Uh, because I think more of the people are going to resonate to what we have to say versus somebody that we pay to come in and talk about whatever the particular thing is. So, um.
But I think we would benefit from having someone who's a really good emcee at those events. And we're helping as part of them and helping.
So, um, I believe the committee is recommending to select board to La Valley. It sounds like the select board wants La Valley too, so I make a motion that we choose La Valley Bressinger to do our design, um, firm, uh, work for the Town Center project.
Seconded. Okay. Double second.
Oh, hey, double second, that's a four, isn't it?
Yeah, that's right.
Not that I want to take your words, but any discussion? Oh, take your job. No?
No, no, you're, you're the one that's running the meeting right now.
Yeah, well, I'm running it for the TCVC.
That's all right, that's all right.
So, uh, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, can we instruct the town administrator to initiate negotiations with La Valley Bressinger? As soon as plausible?
Okay, it's all right.
The other thing we need to do is probably call some of the references, one of the, I don't know if you can do that, just have a conversation. You're already a reference for them.
Right, yeah.
So, maybe, uh, call.
Dover, Fort Smith, Wolfboro.
Just have a conversation and just make sure there's no gutches, um, but.
Also, uh, La Valley was, um, mentioned in their proposal. Fee is a best estimate. They require digital site plans. If we don't have them, um, they can do it. Oh, and also floor plans. That's the one, floor plans, which we don't have.
Right.
Um, so, uh, Art mentioned and, and some of the others also mentioned, built into their estimate or their price was measuring our buildings and doing drawings of what we have. And La Valley specifically said that was not included.
Maybe that's negotiable.
So, that's negotiable, so that's.
I don't know whether it is, but we can ask.
Oh, no, they, they, they said they could, they could do it at an additional cost, so.
So.
That cost must be negotiated.
Negotiate it.
Yep.
Base cost.
I would too.
Because their fee is seventy-eight thousand, which includes eight thousand dollars for a geotech engineering, which we don't think that we need because of the location, so.
So, they were right in the ballpark.
Yes, they were.
Yeah, they're all right in the ballpark. There's just the one firm at a hundred thousand, the other one at twenty-five, so it was really, obviously. So.
Are you going to adjourn the TCVC and then I will, because we're about to hold a closed session.
Uh, can we actually have a process?
Yes.
Oh, I have one item for the board, which is, should be ready quite in a minute. Go ahead, you need something?
Yeah, I got something for the TCVC.
Quick.
Uh, yeah. Uh, right now, our next meeting is scheduled for two weeks from now. And, uh, we have talked about having a presentation at the LEED Fair. The LEED Fair is just six and a half weeks away. Um, our application needs to begin in five and a half weeks. Um, if, if our next meeting is two weeks from now, um, when we start to talk about the LEED Fair, that's only going to.
Fair, that's only going to be four and a half weeks from the fair. It took us, the brochure that we handed out, it took us three weeks to produce that. The displays over at the library took two weeks or so for each one. And I'm not sure when the architect would be starting, but my opinion is, we shouldn't wait two weeks for our next meeting.
Well, depends on what we're going to show at the fair, though. That's the big thing. What are we going to show?
Yeah.
Show this.
You're going to show that?
Well, what I'm saying is, it, so now, now that we have the architect's...
Is that your question? Oh, you can have it.
We need to be ready when they start, and we get to be talking about...
Just in case.
This is one of the best opportunities we have for meeting with the public, so.
All right.
What I suggest, week, is that if we meet more frequently, and maybe it's, each meeting is shorter, and if we meet next week...
I don't believe that for me, either. So you want to meet on the thirty-first?
That's what I'm suggesting, is that that gives us more time for this, at least, the LEED Fair.
The rest of the group?
Talk about it.
Thirty-first?
I consent.
Then?
Grudgingly, I'll be there.
All right.
Do they get a working, a working session?
If we're allowed to have pizza.
No, 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 no.
He won't even let us have food.
I offered, and you guys said no.
You guys?
No, you guys said no. All right, thirty-first at six P M.
That said, no.
Thirty-first at six P M.
Ord and I were all in.
Motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'm second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's your meeting, go ahead.
Okay.
Oh, can we do this first?
Yeah, I actually have a couple of things that are not, non-public.
Can we leave? Can I leave?
You can leave, yes.
I have electrical issues at home. You've got electrical issues.
You're on your electrical.
I don't know, it's okay.
Good job. Nice thing, yeah.
So, we heard back from the church's attorney, that there's, doesn't appear to be any issue with releasing the reverter right from the NHCUCC, which is the big conference. So, it sounds as if there's a meeting on September twenty-second of the board of that body to, to approve the release of the reverter clause, so that the closing can take place anytime after September twenty-second.
Okay.
It's my understanding from talking to Karen Rossi, that the church is already, as we speak, well, maybe not at eight-thirty at night, but working on moving the garage, moving the tank, moving the water line, so that's all happening now, because the purchase and sales agreement said that that would all happen before we close. And then the, the third thing is that the subdivision plan has to be, has to be approved by the planning board, and the meeting for that is September thirteenth. So at the select board's meeting Monday night, there's going to be an application that you'll need to sign. So it sounds as if the closing can be early October.
Okay. Good. It's good news.
Anything else?
Uh, no, thank you.
Oh. The, the party for tomorrow night, Karen, needs permission to go over budget. She would like an additional two hundred dollars to make a total of eight. She needs more money for drinks and things.
For what?
Drinks and things.
Drinks and things?
Yes. She spent, she's been authorized, she would like to be authorized, currently she's authorized to spend six hundred dollars for Randy's party. She's up to five seventy-four, plus tax. She would like an additional two hundred dollars to make a total of eight. She's already spent seventy-five dollars on the hollow rental, a hundred and seventy-five dollars on paper products, finger sandwiches, a hundred and thirty, meat butter, a hundred and thirty-four, cake sixty dollars.
Fine, fine, we'll do it. Let's do it.
Okay. I make a motion to increase the amount from six hundred to eight hundred dollars for Randy S. Stevens' retirement party on...
I'll second it.
All right.
I also have an expense to turn in for that. Well, actually, I already turned it in.
You need to, yeah, yeah. Yep, well, okay, we, we need to finish this.
Motion on the floor. Discussion?
Do you want to run the meeting?
Discussion.
How about a discussion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, no. What? How much was that particular item that you purchased? Because Karen has three hundred and sixty-five dollars, and she doesn't know what to spend for, because that's what she's collected. Should it go toward this particular gift?
That item was a hundred and seventy dollars.
So how about if she gives you payment for that, or maybe, Julie, you can work that out?
Yeah, I don't know what magic is going to happen with that, but okay.
But she's got three hundred and sixty-five dollars, so she can pay for that out of the donations.
That's why she just asked for more money.
No, 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 this is the money she's collecting for the house people for his gift.
Okay.
And she'll use the rest of the money to buy him, give certificates to food places they like.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yeah, that's fine. I like it. So I was going to buy some gag gifts, I might do that anyway, so.
So, Julie, can you make that happen? So she's got the money, so pay off whatever is owed there, and then she can use the rest of it. Because she needs to do that tomorrow.
Yep.
How are we going to do?
No, what?
How are we going to do the presentations? Are we going to ask Randy to come up somewhere in the front, and...
Getting to do it.
Huh?
Oh, we'll get him. Got to take a picture.
We'll get a picture.
You've got, that, that particular gift you're presenting...
I got that, and maybe some gag gifts.
There's some, there's a plaque?
Yeah.
That Denise already has.
There's a story that goes along with what I'm going to give him, so.
There's the scrapbook, and I'm almost done, I'm waiting for two things to come in.
Right.
And then, uh, VFW has a presentation.
Just wanted to remind everyone that the meeting's being recorded, so I don't know how much you want to give away.
He's not going to post it until afterwards, right?
Well, I, let's hope not.
He's not that efficient. Plus, they can't see it on Channel thirteen anyways, because the damn thing's always on.
Yeah, it won't be on thirteen. That's still on May fifth, nineteen sixty-five or something.
So, yeah, if you do the master ceremonies and just introduce everything...
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to...
Uh, Conservation Commission has a presentation they want to make. I don't know about other groups.
For Randy's?
Yes, for Randy.
Okay, so I'll just need a list of who all is going to...
Do you know of anybody else that wants to do something?
I don't know of anyone.
So you've got Conservation, you've got the thing that you have, the scrapbook, Del Hari for the VFW.
Del, okay, yes.
And I don't know about anything else, official.
Okay. You're going, are you going to want to get up for anything, or?
I'm getting up for the scrapbook, that's it.
Okay, so you're going to do the scrapbook. All right. We can put it together.
This is at seven o'clock?
Six.
Seven o'clock tomorrow.
Six, six to eight.
I know it's six to eight, but the person, for Randy to come up, he won't have a time when he can say that it's seven o'clock, call his presentation.
That was my question, is, it's an open house from six to eight, but the presentation is going to be...
Presentation's at seven.
At seven.
Is at seven.
That way their people...
Thank you. So they can get there at six, they can eat, do the presentation, after the presentation you can have cake.
Okay. And we can, we can spread the word about the presentation at seven.
Sure.
Just so people don't eat and leave, or do whatever, shake his hand, you know, we can just put a, so we want them to stay.
Just put a piece of paper of this, his presentation at seven.
Okay. All right, good.
All right.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion.